Good morning and welcome to the February 27, 2024 Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance and I'll ask our General Counsel Mark Silverman to call the ball.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chu.
Here.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Here.
Commissioner Masterson.
Here.
Welcome again to the Public Hearing and Public Meeting of February 27. This meeting is being held in our hearing room at One Center Street on the ninth floor. It is also being held via Zoom and live streamed on our YouTube channel.
Echoing, oh, it's repeating, YouTube, I think.
There.
Hey. YouTube.
As I was saying, this meeting is also being held via Zoom and live streamed on our YouTube channel, so you can watch the proceedings remotely if you like. And we will begin this morning with a proposal from the Research Department to calendar an item for consideration, and after that, we will move to our Preservation Department Public Hearing Agenda to review applications for work on designated properties. So with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Research, Kate Lemos-McHale.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. Item number one this morning is LP 2681, the Temple Court Building, now the Beekman Hotel atrium, 5 Beekman Street, AKA 3 to 9 Beekman Street, 119 to 133 Nassau Street, 10 Theater Alley, Manhattan Block 90, Lot 7503. Item proposed for the Commission's calendar is a nine-story atrium as defined by a line established by the exterior walls of the second-story gallery descending to the first story and ascending to the ninth, terminating in a glazed cast iron skylight, and the fixtures and interior components of the space, which may include but are not limited to the floor, wall, and ceiling surfaces, glazing doors and trim, cast iron staircases and stone treads from first to ninth floor with decorative pressed metal paneling and cast iron grill work, cast iron galleries with balustrades, decorative supporting brackets, incaustic tile flooring, pressed metal ceiling plates and the double-leaf floor hatches, and flat and round arch door and window openings. Presenting this morning is Mary Ann Percival.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Temple Court Building, now the Beekman Hotel atrium, is a stunning nine-story skylit interior atrium, an early and rare surviving example of the 19th-century office building interior built around such a feature. Long enclosed and inaccessible to the public, it was sensitively rehabilitated to become the central feature of the Beekman Hotel in 2016. The combination of carefully restored historic elements and finely crafted plaster and millwork based on surviving examples have returned this historic space to its former glory. The proposed interior is a main feature of the Temple Court Building at the corner of Beekman and Nassau Streets, which was designated a New York City Individual Landmark in 1998. The Temple Court Building, originally to be called the Kelly Building for its owner, the Irish-American merchant banker Eugene Kelly, was designed in 1881 by the firm of Silamon and Farnsworth, and was among the first significant office buildings erected following the financial panic of 1879. When it opened in 1883, the building included more than 200 offices, all opening onto elaborately decorated galleries that encircled a central atrium below a pyramidal skylight. The success of the building led Kelly to commission a 10-story annex to the left of the red line seen in the sketch on the left, designed by Farnsworth by himself in 1889 and completed the following year. The building and the annex as a unit were designated as the New York City Individual Landmark in 1998. In the 19th century, the interior atrium became a popular feature in arcades, hotels, libraries, exhibit halls, department stores, and office buildings, since the volume allowed for both natural lighting and an enclosed, usually grand and often highly decorative space. The first use of the atrium in the United States was the Arcade Building in Providence, Rhode Island, built in 1828 by James C. Butler and Russell Warren. And by mid-century, its popularity spread to New York, where it was used in the now demolished A.T. Stewart Department Store at Broadway and East 10th Street, that had been designed by John Kellam in 1859 and completed in 1862. At the end of the 19th century, the full-height skylit atrium was a prominent feature of office and commercial buildings across the country. Some of our surviving examples include the Brown Palace in Denver and the Bradbury Building in Los Angeles. Because of potential fire hazards, many historic interior atriums have been lost or enclosed, so surviving examples are exceedingly rare. The interior of the Surrogates Court at 31 Chamber Street is an interior landmark from the same era as the Temple Court Building. The atrium returned in the mid-20th century is exemplified by the Ford Foundation on East 42nd Street, which has also been designated a New York City Individual as well as an interior landmark. The atrium of the Temple Court Building is the only known surviving 19th-century atrium of this scale and height in New York City. Described in King's Handbook of New York of 1892 as open from the ground floor to the skylight, for much of its history, two stores and an entrance hall extended into the atrium at the first story, and the atrium extended above from the second to ninth stories. The Temple Court Building, now the Beekman Hotel atrium, includes eight tiers of galleries surrounded by arched door and window openings, incaustic tile flooring, and a cast iron skylight. From the third to the ninth story, the historic galleries feature ornamental cast iron balustrades anchored at the corners by heavy newels. Thin spindle-like balusters support the cast iron panels decorated with stylized flowers. Supporting the galleries are brackets with cutwork decoration at the corners and cast iron dragons along the sides. Tapping the atrium, the historic skylight features decorative cutwork ornament in the beams and delicate filigree in the panels of the upper and lower monitors. The first story was historically occupied by stores, blanking a central hallway whose split prints and rooftops can be seen in these photos. The circa 2,000 image on the left shows how the upper galleries, considered a fire hazard, have been enclosed since the 1950s above the second floor. As part of an earlier uncompleted conversion project in 2005, the stores and partitions at the first stories and along the galleries above were removed. The photos on the right show the conditions prior to the rehabilitation begun in 2013. From 2013 to 2016, the historic atrium was rehabilitated as part of the conversion of the Temple Court Building into the Beekman Hotel by GFI Development LLC, the architectural firm of Gerner, Bronik, and Valcarcelle, and Higgins and Quaysbarthen Partners. The upper galleries were restored, and the first story became the Beekman Hotel's bar and lounge, with its design recalling decorative elements found elsewhere in the atrium. Along the galleries, the historic arched openings of former office spaces have been maintained, along with the flat-headed openings over the hallways connecting to the annex. Surviving examples of the plaster work, door-window inframents, and the door-and-window units informed the restoration, and the arrangement of doors and windows was configured to accommodate the layout of hotel rooms. The floors of the galleries were historically covered in incaustic tiles, except for the double-leaf metal hatches, which allowed office tenants to hoist furniture and safes. Historic tiles are largely original, but new tiles have been added where necessary to recreate the historic pattern, and bespoke carpet runners have been added, exposing only the borders. The galleries from the third through the ninth stories are historic. The second-story gallery walkways shown here had incorporated the roofs of the stores on the east and west sides and part of the north side. A 2005 alteration removed all but the historic gallery at the south side and the double hatch above the vestibule on the north side. In 2016, when the hotel opened, the second gallery had been rebuilt using glass blocks set in concrete that recalled the roofs of the stores, and the balustrade was recreated with glass panels etched with the same pattern as found on the historic galleries above. Access to the galleries was by means of a trio of elevators and a cast iron staircase with decorative panels and grill work. Prior to the restoration, historic elevator cabs and enclosures had been replaced. New elevator enclosures were created and decorated with the arch millwork reminiscent of that originally found in the building. The historic cast iron staircase still encircles the central elevator shaft and contains decorative panels and grill work. In order to maintain the atrium as an open space, an innovative groundbreaking fire safety system consisting of sprinklers and smoke curtains was designed specifically for the Beekman Hotel and implemented. To safely minimize the spread of smoke, fire-rated curtains drop down from the floor of each gallery from a panel hidden behind the balustrade above, and transparent glass panels help seal gaps between the curtains at the four corners. At the ninth story, the curtains drop from a nonhistoric glass canopy over the gallery that enables them to meet naturally at the corners. The proposed landmark site consists of the volume defined by the atrium galleries from the first floor up to and including the skylight, including the galleries and the surrounding walls and decorative features facing into the atrium, east and west hallways connecting to the annex at the second through eighth stories, and the historic cast iron staircase from the first through the ninth story. The Temple Court Building's unique surviving 19th-century commercial atrium has been sensitively rehabilitated as the incredible centerpiece of the Beekman Hotel, with its historic elements lovingly restored and, where necessary, reproduced to recreate the space's historic ambiance. The Research Department recommends that the Temple Court Building, now the Beekman Hotel atrium, be added to the Commission's calendar for consideration as an interior landmark.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Commissioners, do we have questions for Kate or Mary Ann on this one? Commissioner Goldblum.
Was the lobby excluded because that's a restoration? The front part of the lobby?
Yeah, the whole ground floor was recreated, and so in this, the real kind of main event is this atrium and has really the historic fabric, except the ground floor is also sort of recreated, but it seems strange to have an interior landmark not touch the ground, so.
Right. I mean, for the same logic, it seems like why not take it to the front door? I can imagine someone coming in, you know, later on and sticking mirrors and things in there. It just would seem like a great experience.
I think because it wasn't historically open to the street there the way it is now. Yeah, because you had, yeah, you had, right, yep.
Okay, any other questions? Any thoughts or comments on this one?
It's great, what can be said, it's unique.
So what's not protected if this, if Temple Court atrium is protected, the building is designated exterior protected?
The building is...
It's the rooms themselves that are not protected in the donut?
The hotel rooms.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it would be the atrium space in the center and the galleries, the galleries that go around it, including the door surrounds and the surface of the back wall of the galleries, and then the stairs that go around the elevator.
I'm just curious, did, in our research, did we understand where, I was just reading that there was initially a theater in the base of the building. Is that true?
I don't know if we know that yet. Have you found that? It was on Theater Alley.
It's called Theater Alley.
Alley, correct.
And I think that theater was long gone by the time the building was built.
Oh, okay.
That predated this building.
Yeah. And there was also, I believe, a building on the site called Clinton Hall. That will show up in the designation report when it's written.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think that these, as Mary Ann said, these were once very popular features. Oh, I don't see his hand up.
I put it down.
Okay. Commissioner Ginsburg, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to say, from what I understand, we can't designate private spaces like the hotel rooms, but since the atrium is a public space, we can designate it.
That's correct. The space at the time of designation needs to be customarily open to the public, and, you know, I think this landmark is so fortunate in that this owner had a vision to open the space and make it accessible and restore it, and, you know, these, as once popular features, many of them were lost because they were a fire hazard, and in fact, the galleries on many of the floors here had been partitioned out. You would have no sense of the atrium at all, and the restoration has just been incredible, but also, you know, they really had to convince the city that their fire suppression system would pass all the tests, and they'd had to keep redesigning it and keep testing it and keep having inspectors come to persuade them, and fortunately, they did, and so it is now open entirely and now eligible for our consideration, so.
I think that's a great point, because to get it to qualify as an atrium, all the smoke purge requirements in that multi-floor space, it's not easy, as we all know.
Yeah, it took a lot of vision and perseverance to get that approved.
Vice Chair Bland.
Richard is coming. You know, this building is only a five-minute walk from here. What happens in the base of the atrium does not diminish the appreciation of what happens above it, i.e., it's a bar, and it's an extraordinary place. I've been there a few times. It's not far from my office either.
Yeah, I mean, it is wonderful, and we can all make site visits, I'm sure, for the designation. All right, so if there are no other thoughts, Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to calendar the item?
Delighted to.
And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this item is now officially on the Commission's calendar, and we will hold a public hearing in the very near future. Thank you. And we'll now move to our Preservation Department Agenda, and I'll turn it over to Corey Harala, the Director of Preservation.
All right, thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We'll start today's Preservation Department Agenda with Public Hearing Item Number One, LPC 24-02545. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 2563, Lot 45, 885 Manhattan Avenue in the Greenpoint Historic District. This is a commercial building, originally built in 1886 and altered in 1950, and the application is to replace storefront infill and facade cladding.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michelle Freran, Preservation Staff. This application is for work at 885 Manhattan Avenue, which is the northern half of a pair of one-story buildings. The buildings were constructed in 1886 and were subsequently altered sometime prior to 1940 with the installation of modern cladding materials and storefront infills giving the facades a uniform appearance. They were later combined into one block. You can see that alteration in the tax photo on the upper right. In 2009, the storefront at this portion of the building was altered with the installation of new infill signage and an awning to correct work completed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. In addition, new aluminum panels meant to recall the historic panels of the building were installed above both storefronts. The condition and violation was on the bottom right two photos, and then the after on the bottom left, while the existing with that signage and canopy removed is above. Here are some examples of other storefronts in the Manhattan Avenue portion of the district to give you an idea of the context. And the current proposal is to re-clad the upper portion of the building in vertical wood planks with an illuminated wood slot feature above the door, install illuminated signage, replace the storefront infill, including a serving window with metal filler panels above it, install small canopies above the door and serving window, and then, as will be shown later in the presentation, install a partition behind a portion of the display window. And then lastly, here is a rendering of the proposed work. The applicants should be here on Zoom as well to explain the proposal in detail.
Hi there, this is Dan Radman from Chipotle Restaurants. I'm the Design Manager for the Northeast Region, working on this project in Greenpoint. We've been working with the LPC staff on reviewing and previous versions that we had of the building where we were looking to increase the parapet height and further modify the storefront beyond what you're seeing here, but we've modified the design and are submitting here what we believe is a solution for our portion of the building. Unfortunately, the landlord is not allowing us to touch the other portion where you see retail for lease, and that's currently occupied by another tenant, and the landlord doesn't want to do anything to that portion of the building, so we're only limited to our side. But we feel that what we're currently proposing, keeping with the overall scale of the storefront, maintaining the head and sill conditions of the previous openings, we are shifting the entrance door to the right, but it does work with the sidewalk conditions and the level of discharge, and also maintaining the overall parapet height of the building to maintain a continuous state across that line, works with what the context of the rest of the neighborhood is. There isn't a specific style, per se, in any of the other adjacent buildings that are part of the Historic District. It is, you know, kind of a melting pot of different architectural designs and solutions, but this design we've come up with, with the dark planking and the metal cladding on the bottom, we believe it's a really handsome and good solution for this location for an urban condition. I think it will be a great complement to the fabric of that block. There are other, you know, restaurants and businesses that have similar dark solutions, painted existing architectural features or new conditions that also blend well with the current landmark district that we're in.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have questions for the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Lutfi.
So, a member of my family is a huge Chipotle fan.
That's good, that's good to hear. Actually, if you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, go back to right there. So that was one of the previous slides that I was referencing where we had the parapet taller, we had more of the metal cladding up above, some brick below, and in reviewing that with the LPC staff, they weren't so much in favor of this solution. We feel this one is a good solution as well, but we modified it to what you previously saw as the current proposal. Sorry to interrupt.
It's okay.
So, I just, for some reason or other, I know a little bit about you guys, and I just wanted to ask this question. I know that the company is spearheading this, like, new design that for their stores in a series of markets, and they're really about renewable energy, and they have this very consistent design that doesn't look anything like this.
Correct, correct. What you're referring to is our prototype freestanding stores. So we have a 2,300 square foot prototype that we are currently using nationally across various, you know, various markets that has a lot of EPIS, it's gray and black, you know, different tones of gray and different, and black and storefront detailing, but in the urban markets, specifically New York City, if you look at any of our stores in New York City, they all vary greatly depending on the context of the streetscape that they're set into. So sometimes we're limited in New York City and Manhattan where we are going into an existing building on one of the avenues, for example. We really can't do anything except put signage up, whereas elsewhere, down in the Village, for example, we were able to be more creative with the design solutions that we use for those stores, and none of them really reflect exactly what our prototype does, because, quite frankly, our prototype is meant to look a certain way as a freestanding building in a different, you know, open context. When we are within a city block and we're dealing with the fabric of the adjacent neighbors and the architectural vocabulary, we try to respond to that.
Yeah, so that means within, throughout New York City, just to repeat, all the stores are different, look different.
Very much.
But the logo is pretty much the same, and I guess in the front, is that like a takeout window there?
It is, it's a pickup window, so you can't order from there. If any of you are familiar with how we operate, we have a digital app, so you can go on to the digital app and you can place your order, you can pick a time for the pickup, you make your money transaction, everything is done via the app. And whether it's an urban environment like this with a pickup window, or if it's a freestanding building with a drive-up lane, you're given a time to pick up, you either walk up or drive up to the window, show them your QR code or say your name, and you can see in that rendering there's a little shelf on the inside, and your order is waiting in a bag, and they just hand it to you and you walk off. There's very little time spent at the window, very little crowding or, you know, interaction happening. There's no speakers, there's no menu boards, there's none of that happening, it's all digital. And the walk-up window is something we've been doing in certain urban markets, just as a response to minimizing, or helping to reduce, the amount of congestion in the store, but also post-COVID, you know, people are, there are people that still prefer to have a more less contact environment, and we felt that, you know, giving that option to a street-side pickup is a good option for this particular neighborhood.
And what's the depth of the canopy?
42 inches.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yeah, I have a few questions. First, given that Commissioner Lutfi raised it, what are you doing to lower your carbon footprint with this renovation?
Well, there's certain things we can do on the mechanical equipment. We have Energy Star rated and high-efficiency units for the rooftop equipment as well as our cooking equipment. We can't really do much in terms of solar just because of the sort of the valley or the canyon that we're in between other buildings, so there's not a lot of sunlight exposure to leverage that, but what we are doing is all-electric cooking equipment, so it's an all-electric store, no gas being used, and we feel that, that in itself is giving us a leg up in terms of reducing the carbon footprint for urban environments like this.
That is great. So then the next question on the elevation, I have two questions. Question one, is the red just at the entrance to make the entrance more visible?
Yep.
And two, did you look at keeping the metal panels that are on the storefront now instead of going to the wood panels, and if you did or did not, what was the logic for that?
Yeah, so to answer your first question, the red field above the entrance door kind of is an architectural marker of the entrance door. Those are, that is a back surface that's painted, are a specific red that we use, an Adobe Red, and then the slats that you see in front of it are the same wood that we're using for the plank... the same wood that we're using for the planking on the left two-thirds of the facade. We're taking that same wood and creating vertical, effectively two by four vertical slats that are staggered along in front of that red field. And there is a gap between the slats and the red background. And then along the bottom edge, which you can't see in any of the renderings and you won't be able to see from any of the, from the, from the street. There is an LED uplight that shines up and raises that red surface in the back from the bottom up and creates this tapered illuminated red field behind those slats just to give it some additional accent at night as a, as a feature on the facade. And then on the metal panels, yes, we did look at those. They're in really, really poor shape. They've been butchered over the years for different signage solutions, whether it was 7-Eleven or whoever was there before them. There's a lot of rot behind them that we're going to have to rebuild the parapet and some of the framing back there to make it, you know, make it structurally sound so that we can put a new facade on there. So no, no matter what, we would have needed to do something to the facade to rehabilitate it. And the, the metal panels, I mean, they're, they're fine for what they are. But we just felt there was a, there was a better, more interesting architectural solution with what we're showing here.
Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, so then does your, do your wood panels or slats, are they coplanar with the metal panels or is there a slight shift in plane?
They're slight, slightly proud. They would be, I forget the exact dimension, but it was like four or five inches. They're not, they're not projecting or candidly bringing over the, over the, you know, storefront. But they are slightly proud in order to accommodate the new framing and the thickness of the panels and everything else. So, and you, we, I mean, I, I don't think we would want them coplanar. I think we do want the, a little bit of a distinguishing difference between the metal and the wood, just to give it a little relief.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, this is just a quick question about the history of this is basically there was a commercial building here in the 50s that was, you know, partly demolished or whatever. So this is like a taxpayer building situation pretty much. And this might come before us for in the future, a, you know, demolition and buildup.
Possible, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
I'm looking at your example. I mean, you, you have, your building is divided into two, two buildings, it seems to me. And when I look at your examples that you show on LPC dash three. There are one building and they, they all, they look uniform, unified, the facade. Why did you, I mean, these examples don't relate to what you did.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question completely. Are you saying?
Examples to show, show that what, what you did is correct. These examples don't, don't represent what you, what you have presented to us, it's different. These are uniform facades, clearly uniform, clearly one building. Yours, you have divided into two separate buildings with two separate facades.
Understood, I, I don't think the examples we were showing were meant to show the uniformity of the building. We were just using the examples as, to show the different sort of architectural contexts and styles and storefront solutions that are exist within this district. On our building, we, we would have gladly done the rest of the facade to make it uniform. But the landlord is not agreeable to that. They do not want to invest the money in, in making it all one, one facade. And they are limiting our work of what we can do to the space. Even though it's effectively an as-is condition, meaning we're responsible for the work and paying for the work. They only want us to be limited to our portion of the building.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see if we have any public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you Chair Carroll. We have one hand raised on the attendees list, that being Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society of New York. Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now founded in New York City in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our 19th and early 20th century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual and scenic landmarks, interiors and civic art. Now according to the designation report, this building is a one-story taxpayer from the 1880s. But we agree that the existing storefront has little architectural or historic significance. However, the new storefront proposed is no more appropriate to this 19th century historic district than the one being replaced. Arguably, it is less so as the existing storefront is 75 years old and at least reflects the history of the neighborhood's development. The proposal includes a large blank wood plank wall, corrugated metal bulkhead, painted aluminum framing, a lighted sign stuck onto the facade. Now, this collection of features does not make a coherent design. It has no harmonious architectural relationship to the district, the historic building that was or still is on this site. Or the fine historic buildings that are adjacent and nearby. Neither is the proposal an example of good modern design that might in the future be found to contribute to the character and historic development of the district. It could be anywhere and probably is. A corporate entities like Chipotle can build stores that are contextual and fitting for historic districts when they are required to do so. There are examples around the world and across the country. Greenpoint deserves no less. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hands raised on the attendees list. So I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board One recommends approval. And I will bring it back to you Chair Carroll.
All right, I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
Sure. A, a, as the presenter mentioned, the building as it currently stands represents no architectural significance. Nor historic value to the, to the district. I, I do recognize that it is a historic district, a historic area. But as you can see from other examples within the Greenpoint neighborhood of Manhattan Avenue and the historic district. The, the amount of different historic solutions and modifications that have been done over the years are very broad and varied in terms of either appropriateness or significance in architecture. We feel our solution here, we are a brand. We believe this is a, a, a good modern interpretation of, of, of what our brand represents and what it could be at this site. We do believe that this has a, a life to it in terms of its appropriateness and, and significance in the years to come. We, it's, it is not the traditional 19th century building that is present in the rest of the, in some of the rest of the district. You've got the bank building to our left and you've got a retail and residential building to our right that are different, obviously. But this is, this is a single story insert into that fabric of that street front. And we do believe that our, our solution is appropriate and will be sustainable for the foreseeable future.
Commissioners, any final questions? All right, then let's make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion on this proposal for altering sort of two-thirds of this one-story commercial building for this new storefront that would have wood slats above, metal panel below and metal storefronts with takeout window and a canopy and this sort of highlighted red slat section. Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I think just looking at the existing condition, the fact that the building facade doesn't have any contributing historic value. I just look at it as the lot in the mass at the moment and its sense of infill between these two larger scale buildings. I do feel that there is a need for simplicity here. It, it seems too complicated. The storefront ground, street front presence to me is fine. I don't mind variation at the street front because that goes along with the character of the neighborhood and all the retail. It's just the upper portion. I think that Commissioner Jefferson noted that, that the precedence is shown. And for the most part, if you look at all those precedences, the storefronts have been altered, but there's, there is some respect to the upper portions of the building and the, and the singular mass of them. And that's the simple thing that I don't see that's portrayed here. I understand the applicant's complication with the owner and the facade, existing facade. But I wonder if they could have found a way to address the lower portion with the continuous horizontal that may even have continued that existing canopy on the left across the whole facade. I even think there may have been some versions where you could have screened something in front, but allowed the facade behind to stay so that it was a layer as opposed to completely addressing just one portion and leaving the other as it was. Oh. Yeah, in terms of materiality, that I think that I don't have a lot of comment. There is a lot going on on these, on this street, I know it quite well. I just think that it's a sense of continuity in the upper portion, I think is needed. The signage could be added on top of that. But I do think there are other options that can be explored that were more sympathetic.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Master?
Yes, I, I agree with Commissioner Chu's statements. I think that there's no issue with having a variegated retail space and branding it with Chipotle. The issue I think is that it kind of disturbs the fact that this is one building. And in the way it is, there's just too much of a contrast. So somehow if we could show that it is one building and unify it somehow, I think that's what we have to work towards.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with my fellow commissioners said, but I also think that if they painted it one color. You know, got rid of the brown and painted one color with the sign and unified it, I could accept it. I don't mind the texture, but just color.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, my question reflected the fact that, you know, it's, we allow a latitude, a lot of latitude with storefront design. And in this case, we're dealing with a taxpayer building, so. But at the same time, it is a little peculiar that you've got that additional building there. And it's not, neither is this related to the district nor is it related to its little partner there. So I agree with other commissioners that, you know, some effort should be made to integrate, you know, the, the two buildings, so at least they have a, a sense of, you know, consistency.
Commissioner Goblin?
I agree with Stephen.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
Likewise here.
Vice Chair Bland?
I'm okay with it as it is, it's a taxpayer, I can't get that worked up over it.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree this is a non-contributing building. I think it's great, something is happening to it. I, I actually think, you know, it would be nice for the buildings, the, you know, the upper portion to be unified, but in a way I don't think it makes sense because there is going to be another tenant here. And actually, the burden ultimately is going to be on the other tenant once they do come in to fit into the context. And they're going to have to pay attention to what the new addition is. So I think that's really our priority. I, I don't think, it, it's a wonderfully diverse streetscape. And it's like a throwback in a way to what New York has been or was. And I, I think the, it, there needs to be some simplification. I think the illumination at the top should be gone. I don't think that color red works. And I actually think the black is too dark. I think that the, the black wood, I, I would suggest that the applicant work with staff to, to look at that color. Maybe it should be gray wood or just another color that again blends more. It's, I think it's kind of jarring with what is, what's on the street.
Okay, and Commissioner Ginsburg, did you have any other thoughts?
Yeah, so I just want to compliment the applicant. An all-electric industrial kitchen is the newest frontier and the fact that they're doing that is to be commended. I agree with the other commissioners that the red is sort of out of place. And I, it's too bad that the owner won't allow the renovation of the adjacent storefront. But I think as Commissioner, Commissioner Lutfi said, when they come in that, they're, you're setting an example of what we need to do. So just some simplification as Commissioner Chu talked about and getting rid of the red is.
Okay, so I think, you know, there's a, a sort of a range within, there's a general sense of simplification to help unify, but a little bit of a range on how to do that. So if you're all comfortable, maybe we could turn that over to the staff. And Commissioner Chu, could you make a motion to recommend approval with the modification that they simplify the upper portion in terms of color and or material to help sort of integrate the two portions of the building? Okay. Goblin, the red is gone. Storefront lighting.
Okay, in the case of LPC 2402545885 Manhattan Avenue, Greenpoint Historic District. A commercial building originally built in 1886 and altered in 1950. Application is to replace storefront infill and facade plating. Just want to note that the certificate of appropriateness 102524 was issued, was, I don't have to read that, okay. Okay, just want to note that the building's scale, style, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of Greenpoint Historic District. Stuff also, we also note that this building is one of the pair of buildings altered at the same time which photographic evidence suggests occurred prior to 1940. I recommend approval with modification, finding that this 19th century structure has been substantially altered for subsequent commercial uses, therefore the replacement of storefront components will be in keeping with its own history of change over time. That the historic mid-20th century storefront was altered prior to the designation of the historic district. Therefore, the replacement of infill will not eliminate any significant architectural features. That the streetscape on Manhattan Avenue features a range of storefront types and configurations, therefore a more contemporary storefront design will be in keeping with the variety of storefronts in the surrounding streetscapes. That the solid panels adjacent to the display windows and adjacent serving window will not obscure the transparency of the windows given the overall scale of the storefront glazing. That the building's facade is set back from the adjacent buildings, therefore the projection of the sign will not call undue attention to itself in the streetscape. That the interior signage located immediately behind the glass is small in size relative to the storefront and will only obscure a portion of the storefront glazing. And we also, let's see. That this, okay. We also comment that the building and adjacent building were modified and redesigned with the unified facade in the first half of the 20th century. The proposed work would disrupt the unity of the facades. And we asked the applicant to work with staff to look at simplification of the design so that there is more sense of cohesive unity to the upper portion of the building design.
Thank you. And Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland? Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goblin? Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With 10 in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right. So that's approved with some modifications. So please continue to work with the staff and we'll move to the next item.
Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
The next item is public hearing item number two, LPC 24-04572. An application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1959, lot 67, 428 Vanderbilt Avenue in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is an Italianate-style row house designed by Thomas B. Jackson, built circa 1872. The application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Janelle, go ahead with our preservation staff. The item before you is for 428. For 428 Vanderbilt Avenue in the Fort Greene Historic District. The subject property is located on the west side of Vanderbilt Avenue. I will be walking you through the details of the proposal. I will be walking you through the details of the proposal, which is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions. Here is a survey of the subject property showing an existing one-story partial width addition, which is proposed to be demolished, and a block plan showing a proposed two-story full width rear yard extension with a deck and stair. For context, these are the 1940s and 1980s tax photos. This is a block plan showing that there are rear yard extensions at the block. And there are some photos of the existing rear facade, existing extension to be removed, and the rear facades of the adjacent buildings. There may be limited visibility of the rear facade and rooftop through a break in the street wall along Claremont Avenue. For the proposed rooftop addition, a mock-up was completed documenting that the addition will not be visible over the primary facade. However, there are railings that will be visible over the rear facade. As mentioned, there are existing extensions of varying depths and varying heights within the rear yards. And then the next two slides show the existing and proposed front and rear yard elevations, showing the proposed rooftop addition as well as the proposed two-story rear addition with a deck and stair. Both additions are proposed to be clad in gray finish stucco. The deck and railings will be black finish metal. And the new windows, doors and skylights will also be black finish. This is the existing building section with the one-story extension that is slab-on-bray and a proposed building section showing the additional bulk shaded in gray. And I want to point out that there is no excavation proposed at the rear yard. The next three slides show the existing and proposed floor plans, where you can see the change from the existing partial width one-story extension and the proposed full width two-story extension. And as shown in the proposed roof plan, the rooftop addition includes additional room beyond the stair landing. And the applicant is present to discuss the appropriateness of the proposal and answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Maybe we could just land on the rear elevation for a moment. All right. Are there any questions for the applicant? I think it's a two-story rear yard addition and a rooftop addition. There is a potential view through a gap around the corner on Claremont, but it looks like it would be very limited through vegetation and it would be oblique. So are there any, so if there are no questions, let's see if we have any public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak on this item? All right. Let's see if we have any remote participants. Gregory?
Thank you, Chair Carroll. I do not see any hands raised in the attendees list. If you would like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Okay. Yes, I see one from Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HGC finds the bulk of this rear yard addition to be appropriate, but its materials to be inappropriate. The real, the rear wall should be repointed brick instead of stucco, and the windows should be wood or steel rather than aluminum. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I am looking through the list and I do not see any further hands raised. So I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends conditional approval, suggesting the historic cast iron window guards at the garden level on the front facade should be retained. And with that, I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
All right. And I believe all of the work at the front facade is being reviewed at staff level and not before us today. So I'd like to ask the applicant now if they would like to respond to comments we've heard, other than the window guards.
No, we don't have any further comments or.
There was a comment about the proposed stucco finish. And I believe that the upper floors are currently stuccoed. And so you're proposing stucco to match the upper floors?
That's correct. We would like to use in-kind light material of the existing feature of the facade.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any other final questions? Okay. Let's close the hearing. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So as we've heard, this is a two-story rear yard addition and a bulkhead that is a little bit larger than a bulkhead and a railing at the roof. The addition is to be stucco to match the stucco of the upper floors. And there may be some oblique limited visibility through this gap, which is currently not viewable through at this point with vegetation. So Vice Chair Bland, would you start this one?
Yeah. I think this is typical of what we see lots of around this table. The non-visible rooftop elements are noted and enjoyed, I think, by us. The stucco on the back of the building, I think, is quite typical. So is brick, but they've chosen stucco. I see no issue with that from my point of view. So I, I think I can accept it as it is.
And I think that Janelle showed us that there were other rear yard additions of varying heights and depths. And I think even some of those were in stucco as well. Well, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, likewise, yeah. I mean, this is quite common to what we approve. And also the applications, applicants' photo of the similar rear yards.
All right. Great. Are there any other thoughts on this one or other opinions? Okay. I think we're probably in agreement. Vice Chair Bland, would you make the motion?
Sure. In the matter of LPC 24-04572, sorry about that, 428 Vanderbilt Avenue in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is an application to construct rooftop and rear yard additions. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. That the proposed rooftop addition will be only minimal, minimally visible from a public thoroughfare, from a limited vantage point through a gap in the street wall in the context of secondary facades. And the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare. That the rear yard additions with similar height and depth exist within the block and that the proposed two-story rear yard addition will be modest in scale and will not overwhelm the building adjacent buildings or the blocks, his central green space. That the proposed rooftop addition will be set back from the front and rear of the building, maintaining a sense of the building's original massing. That the gray finish stucco and double hung window and door assemblies as at both additions will be, will harmonize with the existing coated rear facade and will be in keeping with other rooftop and rear additions found throughout the district. And that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With 10 in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is public hearing item number three, LPC 24-04312. An application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 2101, lot 58, 252 Cumberland Street in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is a vernacular frame house built circa 1852. And the application is to construct a rear yard addition and modify window openings.
Hi there. My name is Natalie Reebuck with Redesign Architects. Today we have 252 Cumberland Street to present to you. Hi there. My name is Natalie Reebuck from Redesign Architects. Today I'm presenting 252 Cumberland Street. This project was first originally designed in 1852 by architect George Dorean as a wood frame structure. We are in the historic Fort Greene District. You can see the project is on Cumberland, located in the middle of the block. This is a historic photo from 1904. And then two additional photos of the deterioration of the building. You can see additional deterioration at the front facade. And we are currently working at staff level to cover the front facade work, which is window replacement, patching and repairing the cornices, the siding, bulkhead and a few other items. What we're here to discuss with you today is the request to construct a three-story extension at the rear as well as making the windows at the top level larger and a rear deck. So these are images from our rear yard of 252. As you can see, it is also not in great shape. I want to point out on this slide that we currently align at the lower level with our neighboring building 254. Then you see further on 256 pushed out further beyond 254. And then a three-story extension at 248. Additional photos of how badly it's damaged at the rear. Again, I, this is for reference. We are rebuilding the bulkhead. We did some sightline studies. We're working at staff level to get those items approved. And the mockups are still in place if anyone's interested in taking a look at them. This image is a bird's eye view of where it's situated within the block. The extension is not visible from any public right of way. You can see from this view, you start to see some of the existing extensions on this block, which we did study. You can see there are quite a few different types of extensions. So in this block, we have two four-story extensions, four three-story extensions, 25 two-story extensions and five one-story extensions. So it is quite a mixture of the type and scale of extensions within this block. These are, this is a view from our rear yard of a couple of the extensions. So you can see 248 and 230 beyond. And then across from our rear yard, you see the Oxford Street extensions. This is for reference, the front facade work that we're restoring. And then this is the rear elevation. So at this elevate, on this elevation, I'd like to point out that we are requesting to enlarge the rear openings because we do what we would like to install the door out to the terrace. And then at that, once we sort of looked at installing the door, we thought that it was best to use the same height windows as the second floor, also on the third floor. This is a rendering from the rear of the extension. You can see the steel gray deck coming from the bottom level. And then we have two stories of an Arcadia window wall system as well as metal panel at the lower two levels. And then we step back 18 inches to give a little bit of depth in the change of material. And we go back to using the same material that we're looking at using on the front, which is a hardy plank with punched windows. And then we're leaving the original third floor in line with our sister building. This is an Axon view or a bird's eye view rendered of what the extension would look like. You can see from this picture, there are quite a few different, different locations where the extensions step in and out. And we feel like ours fits in quite nicely in that, in that view. I'm showing this Axon because I mainly wanted you to understand the step back of materials. So you have the lower two levels of window wall and metal panel and then stepping back the 18 inches. This blue area shows what we're actually requesting. So the, the white area on the lower two levels is already in place. So we're really only requesting the extension that's covered in blue. These are window details for reference. And then this, either the window wall details also for reference. I would like to thank you guys for taking the time to step the project.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I just wondered that the color, because the color sample, the hardy board on your material slide looks a lot lighter than your renderings.
We're going to do a custom color to match what's currently at the.
Okay. So you're gonna, you're looking at the historic color of the facade. Do we have that information?
The, the historic color?
Yeah.
We, I don't have the exact historic color, but we plan to do color.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I didn't paint the hardy board.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Commissioner Jefferson?
On page LPC 20, the second floor. Why is it not aligned with the neighboring building?
The step back?
Yeah.
We thought it would be best to align at the lower, lower two levels and then step the material back since we are changing the material on the, the second floor.
Thank you.
It's sort of, in a way, I guess, evokes a porch almost, like a tea porch or something. Modern tea porch. Okay. Other questions? All right. Just one quick question. Do you need to raise the roof height to get the door at the top floor? It doesn't look like it, but I just wanted to confirm that. Okay. All right. And I will note that there is no one in the room to testify. So I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a few hands raised in the attendees list. The first we'll be hearing from is Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society of New York. Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, our two concerns about this proposal are for shown work in the presentation, but not calendared for this public hearing. The first is the proposed replacement of the wood clappards at the front facade with hardy board siding. This doesn't appear to meet the Commissioners' rules for replacement of wood facade materials. The new siding is described as having a four-inch exposure. The existing siding. The existing siding and the siding in the nineteen forty tax photo, which may be shingles and not clappards, appears to have a larger exposure. Also, the first floor siding under the porch is flat chap siding with no reveal. Now, was this perhaps determined in the past to be the historic pattern at this floor, revealed beneath later siding? We have noted that there is a real wood alternative to cement board and other substitute material. Acetylated wood is natural, non-toxic, sustainable, and has a fifty-year warranty against decay even if unpainted. Yet, it holds paint better than any other wood. It is cost competitive with hardy board. It should be explored as an option. Now, second, the drawing showing proposed work at the entrance is troubling. The existing door has four panels and sits within an ensemble with two side lights, a transom, and a pair of pilasters. Much of this appears to be visible in the tax photo and may represent original material. The proposal shows a flush door and has notes about replacing glazing. We are concerned that the proposed work doesn't reflect the preservation of materials and attention to detail that this possibly historic entrance deserves. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HTC finds this rear addition two stories too high. The original top two stories of the existing building should be maintained. We are also concerned about the lack of compositional consistency between the fenestration and materiality of the rear facade. We are not suggesting any particular direction, but encouraging a more coherent approach. HTC is also surprised to see that the wood siding on this building's front facade is being replaced with hardy board, but that change is not part of the docket for this CVA. We are intrigued by the omission. Our understanding is that in the past, LPC has required the use of wood clappard on the lower two floors of a front facade and allowed hardy board above. Have LPC's rules and precedents changed? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hands raised. If you would like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Okay, no further hands are raised. So I will note for the record that we received a letter of recommendation for approval from Brooklyn Community Board Two recommending conditional approval, suggesting the historic cast iron window guards at the garden level on the front facade should be retained. And we also received a letter from an individual which was shared with the Commissioners. And I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you. And before I turn to the applicant, I think I'll just have Corey address the work at the front. And, you know, I think that that work is still under review, but eligible for staff review and may be evolving. But Corey, would you like to address the comments?
Sure. And I would just point out what you just said as one thing that, you know, in the calendar advertisement, we do carefully list all of the work under review by the commission and therefore what others would see in reviewing it. And in this case, none of the work at the front facade was calendared. So that's all under staff level review, still in, still in progress. And the applicant showed, showed you all some of that work because they believe it's nice restoration work, and they're bringing the building back at both the front facade in addition to what they want to do at the back. But specifically to the clappard siding, a few things about that. The rules that were somewhat recently adopted, beginning in twenty nineteen, did in fact allow staff level review of wood siding replacement with fiber cement board if there was a building code requirement due to combustibility issues, and that is the case here. Furthermore, this building was covered with perma stone at some point in the mid-century and removed. And all the wood siding that you see today is not historic. But again, the lap exposure and some of those other details are being worked out with staff. And I think the last thing is the window guards at the, at the garden level are being retained.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to ask if you'd like to respond to anything else. Okay. All right, Commissioners, any final questions? All right, let's move. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And as we've heard, this is for work at the non-visible rear facade. The proposal is to extend the, the parlor floor and the second floor additions. The applicant has shown that there are a variety of additions and deeper buildings in this block. And the proposed parlor floor would extend out and basement level would extend out to the neighboring building and be articulated in, in metal. And then the second floor would be set back as it would be articulated in a hardy board material so that the, the, there's a shift in plane to address the different materials and sort of render the lower portion as a more porch-like element. So we'll begin our, oh, and the proposal also includes raising the windows at the top floor and creating a door to the new terrace. We'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
Yes, thank you. In general, I think this is good, appropriate. The one issue I would raise, see what the other Commissioners say, is on the top floor, on the rear, I would not raise the lintels. I could lower the sills. And I would allow the raising of one lintel to, if required, for the door for access to the terrace. But besides that, I think this is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, Commissioner Ginsburg took the word out of my mouth. Most of it is appropriate. I agree with his modifications.
All right. Vice Chair Bland?
Say for emphasis that the relationship of the lintel of the top floor and the cornice and the roof is to me a critical proportional relationship that should not be changed. And if the window needs to be enlarged, I can accept that it might be. And it should go from sill down, not lintel up.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree with the comments that have been made.
Does everybody else agree with those comments? Okay. All right. So Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make that motion?
I will. With regards to LPC twenty-four dash zero four three one two, two fifty-two Cumberland Street, Fort Greene Historic District, a vernacular frame house built circa eighteen fifty-two, application is to construct a rear yard addition and modify window openings. I note that the building's style, scale, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the removal of the existing rear yard addition will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, and will not, that the rear yard addition will be, will not project far, further into the rear yard than other additions within the block, and will not overwhelm the building or central green space, that the addition will not rise to the full height of the rear yard thereby maintaining a sense of the building's original massing, that the material and design of the rear yard addition featuring metal composite panels, cement board, cladding, stucco, and multi-light metal windows and door assemblies will recall the typical material palette and articulated fenestration found at secondary facades and additions throughout the historic district, that the proposed window openings at the top floor of the rear facade will only be enlarged vertically, maintaining the rhythm of the fenestration pattern of this floor, and the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene District. However, I find that raising the lintels of the windows openings at the top floor of the rear facade will diminish the building's relationship to the neighboring twin building and will be awkwardly close to the cornice. Therefore, I recommend that working with staff that the heads of the window openings at the top floor be maintained with only the sill drop to enlarge them, with the exception of one opening being raised for door if required.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland? Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
So that's approved with those modifications. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number four, LPC twenty-four dash zero five four four four. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block three eighty-seven, lot fifty-five, two thirty-three Wyckoff Street in the Boram Hill Historic District Extension, an Italianate-style row house built circa eighteen seventy-one to seventy-two. The application is to construct a rear yard addition and to alter the front facade.
Anthony Portillo, AMP Architecture. So we are proposing a rear addition, first floor approximately eighteen feet nine and a half inches. And then the second floor is a six-foot addition. And there'll be a terrace outside of the second floor addition above the first floor addition. Black spiral staircase, you know, aluminum powder coated black with aluminum powder coated black railing. We are proposing a face brick. It's lorrings built.
You can leave it on the table if you'd like. That's okay. That's great. Thank you.
The plan would be to use that brick consistently on the facade to the top of the building. And then we'd like to stucco the sides of the addition. We're just providing some existing conditions of photos of what it looks like now. We will be removing the small addition on first floor now. Then you have your elevations. And this is just showing you what type of doors we want to use. Yeah, staircase, and that's the brick. And then there will be a landing at the staircase down from the studio garden apartment. We plan to use it still. This is the cellar plan, and so the plan is to have a crawl space under the addition. Currently, there is a cellar in the existing room. Basement or the garden level. Edition there. And this is the second level. That's the six-foot addition with terrace. Oh, I apologize. We go back. But yes, this is the six-foot addition with the terrace on the, at the second level. And then this is the third level. We are putting a skylight, sorry, two skylights in at the addition. Black frame. And we're not proposing any additions to the rear at this level. And we're just showing you existing and proposed sections. We have two of those. And then we have our block map. And currently there are thirty-two, I believe thirty-two one-story additions. There are five two-story additions and three, three-story additions. And we color coded that for reference. And we're here just showing you basically isometrics or, you know, top-down images of the additions that are on this block. As a second ask, we are proposing to put a brownstone base at the front elevation. It seems to be typical in, on this, on Wyckoff, on this block. We have showed a map here. The, the homes that have the B indicated in front of them currently have brownstone. And there are some images showing what it looks like. And we're proposing to do the same thing. And that's it.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for this applicant? All right. And I will note that there is no one in the hearing room to testify, so I will turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
I had one.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see that. Commissioner Chu?
Can you explain the brick cladding on the rear addition? There's, you're using soap brick?
That's correct. We're going to use BrickIt as the manufacturer. We do have to need the energy coat, so there will be a dense glass, then insulation board, and then BrickIt makes like a metal pan that goes on top of the insulation. And then it gets stuck to the metal pan.
Okay, and that's on?
Metal pan's fast and, you know, substrate.
But that's on the lower portion of the rear, right?
We're proposing to do it in the whole, the whole rear.
Oh, okay. Okay. It says to apply directly to the existing brick facade on the upper floor?
That's correct.
Had, did you explore just cleaning and restoring that brick facade and not covering?
At the, at the third level?
Yeah.
I, I mean, we could, we could take that as a recommendation. I don't think that's a problem. It might need to be repointed. The, the, the front has a little bit of repointing required as well. We just thought that it would be a consistent look, you know, if that brick went all the way up. But I don't think it would be a problem trying to clean up the third level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Yes, Commissioner Lutfi?
The original condition on the front is brick, correct, all the way down? So why do you want to apply brownstone when it's, you know, sort of the condition, mostly the condition in the neighborhood? Why would you want to change it?
Well, so actually across the street from this building, the, the row houses that are there are, all have brownstone. And then, as I pointed out, on this street, there's eight or nine homes with brownstone. And, you know, we like the aesthetic of it, and that's really the reason. We also think it is typical for the area and it will not be out of character. So that's the reason.
Was your building constructed as part of a row? And is that row still intact with all brick going all the way down?
Well, not the entire row. The some, I guess, over the ages, brownstone was applied to some of these buildings.
How many buildings in your row still have brick all the way down?
Well, all the ones that don't have a B there. So it's, I would say it's seventy percent of the row. Thirty percent has, they have the brownstone.
And that's all part of one row? Tim?
Just the road, that whole block was built over in like four periods between eighteen seventy and eighteen seventy-four. So there are, it's, they're almost all the same design, but there's a few variations. At the tax photo, there were maybe, one building had already been fully restuccoed in the block. And there were, I believe, five houses that had stucco at the base, but they were not, they're not adjacent to this section of the row. So as that, and that is represented on that map, that, that area is mostly intact with brick around the house. Also, some of these were done recently because this is a recent extension, the extension. So some of the brick, the brownstone, I think, was done at a few houses within the last seven, eight years.
Thank you, Tim. That's helpful. Any other questions? Okay, let's move to testimony now, and we'll see, Gregory, if there are any remote participants for this one.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a couple of hands raised in the attendees list. The first person we'll be hearing from is Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society of New York. Christina Conroy, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, almost every rear yard addition on this block is one-story. We think the proposed addition should remain at only one story. However, if two levels of addition are deemed acceptable, they should align. The first floor addition should be pulled back to the depth of the second floor addition. The stepped plan proposed is atypical and too disruptive to the character of the interior block. The roof may require protective railings because of the new HVAC equipment. Railings are not shown in the presentation. And finally, the front facade, at the front facade, we also oppose covering the historic red brick basement with brown stucco. There is no historic architectural or preservation justification for doing this. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HTC finds it difficult to judge this proposal's appropriateness accurately or fairly because appropriateness is a question of context. And this building's context within its street and donut are not sufficiently documented in this proposal. Specifically, we need to see dimensions of the adjacent rear extensions. As to the elements of the proposal itself, HTC believes the fenestration pattern on the second floor of the rear extension should align with the windows above. Further, the bulk should be a single-volume two-story addition rather than a tiered solution in order to match other buildings in the donut. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hands raised for this item. So I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to Chair Carroll.
So would you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
Yes, actually, in regards to the stepping of the addition, I think it's shown in our presentation. If you look at 206 and 206A, they have a stepping addition for the addition at the rear, which I do agree that other additions are full height. But it seemed to be a mixture in that donut. I don't think it's, it's one or the other. The idea of the second floor is that the first floor will basically be a studio apartment, it's a two-family home. And we are just trying to get a little extra space for the living area on the second floor with the bedrooms on the third floor. So that was the reason for that addition. And I do think it does align with a few other stepped additions. Is that it?
Commissioners, any final questions? Not seeing any. We'll move to close the hearing. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Salute.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we'll begin our discussion. And the proposal has really two components. One is at the front, which is to create a stucco base to replicate rusticated stone on this building that is part of a row where originally the brick went all the way down to the ground and still remains that way, it looks like, on a majority of the buildings. And the rear, proposed rear yard addition, which is not visible from a public way, and I think the applicant has shown the context to show other similarly sized additions. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Excuse me, I can't hear Michael. I don't know if something can be done about that.
Better? Better now?
Yes, much better.
Okay, great. Sorry, sorry about that. So I think for me, the notion of a multi-story addition on this building is problematic because it's the first one on its side of the block. I think it's a remarkably uniform block. And I don't think that, that we should be varying from it. I also think it does seem to stick out more than most of the, the additions on the block. I mean, I'm just reluctant to mess up a relatively pristine block. You know, the second-story additions, I think, third story are either on bond or Bergen. And I didn't see anything on Wyckoff.
Can we move to the block plan and/or rear elevation?
Image of Levin. There it is, right there.
No, it's there.
Yeah, I don't see anything. I mean, it's all pretty uniform there. It looks like it's all one story on this side of the block. I think that's pretty remarkable, and I think that, you know, we should try to hold on to that. I also think that matching the worst or the most extreme of the block is not often the way we do things. I think that, you know, something a little bit less intrusive into the block would be appropriate. So I'm, I'm not a fan of the rear yard addition as it's currently proposed. I also think that Stevens' catch, given the rather difficult way this proposal has its noting, is very important. I think the notion of thin brick on a historic building should be highly questioned. If there is a unusual, extreme reason for accepting it, I can, I can do so reluctantly. But it is a poorer class of material for a historic building and should only be used when necessary.
Okay. And I, you know, I do think that where the predominant additions have been one-story or even less in a more pristine condition, we have allowed two-story additions. We've certainly not, in those conditions, gone to three stories. But we have allowed two stories. These buildings are sort of three to begin with, so there may be something in that that would change that. But I would not disqualify too solely on the block plan. But the depth is certainly deeper than anything else. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I, I actually pretty much agree with Michael. First, on the, certainly on the front facade, on the use of brick as opposed to the stucco, the brownstone in this case, because I, I just think it's, you know, there's no reason for it and it should, we should preserve something that is, you know, you know, appropriate at this site. On the back, yes, the applicant made a good case by showing all of the two-story additions and three-story additions that exist, but none of them exist on this side. And it's a pretty intact row in the back. It does also appear to extend, even discounting that the part of the bump there is probably the stairway, the deck or whatever. The two-story addition itself seems to extend beyond maybe possibly one, one-story addition in the whole block. So I'm not, I'm not too comfortable with this two-story addition and the amount that it extends. You know, even relative to some of the other, some of the other extensions that are three-story or something don't go out as far. So, you know, I'm just not comfortable with the, that, the extent of the proposal in height and extent.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
In terms of the, the the brownstone portion of it, I'm opposed to that. The argument about the donut is convincing, although so I'm leaning the side of other Commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner Master?
So in the front, I agree that we should retain, retain, you know, the brick throughout. In terms of the rear addition, I'm okay with the two-story addition. I, I find it modest. And when it does jut out, I think there's another one that juts out in the same amount. And I think that there's a lot of space in the donut that can accommodate a two-story addition. And I just find that the massing and, I mean, I, I think, I find it appropriate. But I, I just also want to say that I do agree with Stevens' catch that in the rear facade, that the, I guess, the upper level, you know, brick should be retained.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Chu?
I agree with my fellow Commissioners' comments. I think that looking at the rear addition, my issue is just the way it's composed. The, the, the ground floor addition is quite deep. I would be fine with it if it was just a single-story addition. I would also accept a two-story addition if it only projected both floors six feet, which is consistent with some of the two-story additions on the block, which do not project that far as this ground floor does into the rear yard.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Letfy?
I actually, I agree with what Commissioner Chu just said.
Yeah.
On both. How to, how to handle the second, if there is a second.
All right. Commissioner Bland?
Yeah. Keep the brick in front, no stucco, brownstone. And in the back, I think if it's not as deep, I can go with the second story. Bring it back a little bit.
All right. Commissioner Chen?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Chu and Commissioner Bland.
Okay. And Commissioner Ginsburg?
I'm in general agreement with Commissioner Chu. The one thing I'd add, and I'm somewhat conflicted about this, having the exterior insulation and the thin brick from an energy perspective is better. But I'd need to be convinced that the thin brick was being done in such a way that it didn't look like thin brick.
Okay. All right. So I think we've heard a variety of comments. I think there's unanimity on the front. I think everybody believes the historic condition should be retained. And with respect to the rear, we've heard some comments about the height and depth, especially the combination of them in this particular context. And so there has been some Commissioners who are, might be comfortable with a two-story addition if it's less deep. And I think that otherwise there's support for a one-story addition. So we'll take no action today. We'll let you think about that. I think it, you know, there was an interesting comment about the, from an energy perspective, that thin brick. But I think most would like to see the top floor retained. So why don't you work, continue to work with Tim and Bill, and we'll have you back when you're ready with a revised proposal that responds to the comments. Great. Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to public hearing item number five, LPC 24-04607. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 323 lot 4, 47 Henry Street in the Cobble Hill Historic District. This is a row house built in 1844 to 55. And the application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions, reconstruct the top floor of the rear facade, and extend chimney flutes.
Hello, Commissioners and landlord staff. Thank you for hearing this application today. Did everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
I'm okay with the mic?
Okay.
My name is Jackie Poudy Valen, JPD Preservation Consulting. I'm here today with the architect Kiva Sullivan of Ryle Sheridan Carroll Architects. This is this is 487 Henry Street. An application to construct a rooftop addition, which will necessitate also raising a chimney flue to construct a rear addition that meets passive house standards and to reconstruct the top floor rear facade. The house is located on the east side of Henry between Hayne and DeGraw Streets, closer to DeGraw. As you can see in the partial block plan, there's a view corridor through the rear yards from DeGraw. Here's the house viewed looking, sorry, I don't have allergies already. Here's the house viewed looking south toward DeGraw. It was built as part of a row extending from 483 to 489, pictured here. Here's the photo of the existing rear facade, which has already been altered by the removal of a window opening, the reduction in size of some other window openings, the installation of a firescape, and the application of stucco. These axons show the proposed work, I think, most succinctly. On the right, you can see the proposed leveling of the roof, the proposed bulkhead and railings, and you can see the proposed rear addition, which will align in depth with the addition at the rear of the house on the corner to the left. You'll note there are already rear additions at adjacent buildings with a variety in depth into the interior of the block. We'll show you that in more detail later with a block plan. I'd also like to note that in working with the staff, the width and height of the rooftop addition has already been greatly reduced from when it was originally submitted and from what the community board already voted to approve. Here are the existing and proposed roof plans. The proposed bulkhead will be set back fifteen feet from the front facade and ten foot one inch from the rear facade. Here are existing and proposed sections through the roof. The proposed bulkhead will be a modest eight foot, eight foot six, six inches tall with a canted roof to try to reduce its visibility. The raised flue will be also eight foot six, and you can see the perimeter railing at three foot six. Here's the proposed building section and sightline study. The existing building envelope is outlined in red. And here are photos of the mock-up installed on the roof. Here are photos taken from Henry Street with the mock-up in place. You can see that one small portion of the raised flue is visible, although not as tall as the raised flue that's visible over the corner. Here are additional here are additional mock-up visibility photos. On the left is the view looking at the house from the southwest corner of Henry and DeGraw, where you can still see the raised flue. In the middle and right photos, you can see the building from the rear, from a gap in the street wall on DeGraw, in part because there's also a parking lot on DeGraw next to the backyards of houses that face Henry. And you can see the mock-up of the bulkhead and the raised flue and the backyards of the houses that face Henry. You can also see there are other visible rooftop additions nearby at the roofs of 491, the house on the corner, and, and the rear of, and from the rear of 483 Henry. Again, that's part of the same row. So here's the existing and proposed rear elevations. On the left, you can see again that this rear elevation has already had a history of alterations, including changes in window size and placement and the installation of a firescape. On the right, you can see the proposed three-story addition with enlarged window opening and an eighteen-inch brick spandle separating the, the lower openings. At the roof, I'm sorry, at the top floor, the reconstruction of that portion of facade is noted. And the door is proposed to be installed at the center opening. Please note the reconstructed top floor rear facade would also cast stone lintels and sills have brick material, which would be in keeping with the, this portion of facade, sorry, would return this portion of facade closer to its original appearance. Here are the proposed materials, including true brick for the rear addition and reconstructed top floor rear facade, cast stone resembling brownstone for the linters and sills, bluestone pavers, black paint for the new railings and windows, and cedar for a proposed rear yard fence. The rooftop addition would be finished in an off-white stucco. I'm sorry, we forgot to include that here, but it is noted on the drawings. Here are the existing and proposed basement floor plans, showing the rear addition as well as the proposed changes at the rear yard, which is really staff overwork. Here's the proposed rear elevation in context with its immediate neighbors. On the left, you can see the enlarged window openings that LPC previously approved at the house 489 Henry. The rear of that house is also visible from DeGraw, incidentally. And here is the proposed rear addition shown in context with its neighbors. The proposed rear addition will align with the addition at the house on the corner, 491 Henry. It will extend twenty feet into the rear yard. This will be eight foot This will be eight foot 10 and 1/2 inches short of the existing rear addition that's at the rear of 483 Henry. So this addition will not extend further into the interior green space than neighboring additions. Here are photos of the rear facade at 487 Henry and its immediate neighbors from the rear yard. On the left is a photo looking at the rears of 489 and 491 Henry with its rear addition. In the middle is a more recent photo of 489 Henry, which is, and the other photo is still obscured with blue tarp. And on the right are the rears of 487, 485, and 483 Henry. Here are additional context photos taken from the roof of 487 Henry. On the left, you can see the rear addition of 483 Henry. In the middle and right photos, you can see the other three-story additions that are within this block. And here on this proposed block plan, you can see highlighted in green the proposed three-story addition at 487 Henry and the locations of other three-story additions within this block. I counted 10 three-story additions within this block, incidentally. Here's the existing building section and the proposed building section, showing the line of the existing building envelope in red and showing in blue where floors are to be replaced and partially removed. These are just additional, these are window details for the basement floor, the first floor, for the second floor of the addition. Here's the existing top floor rear facade, which is currently coated with stucco, which is also obscuring the lines of its simple brick cornice. And here's the proposed top floor rear facade, which is proposed to be reconstructed in new brick to match the historic with windows and door openings located in the historic locations of the original windows. The brick corbeled cornice would also be reproduced. And here are proposed terrace, the proposed terrace door for that floor and proposed window details for that floor. And here are proposed rear facade renderings, showing the view from DeGraw with and without the trees that are currently there obscuring the view. And additional proposed rear facade renderings showing the rear from DeGraw, again, with and without the existing greenery. Just for context, we wanted to also show you rear additions that were approved elsewhere in this district and which are also visible from the street. These are left to right, the rears of 469 Henry, 4 Strong Place, 435 Henry, and 491 Henry. And lastly, here are images of similar conditions elsewhere in the district where you can see rear additions over gaps in the street wall. So it's our position that seeing a difference in volume at the rears of buildings is not something unusual for this district. That's our presentation, and we look forward to any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? All right, we, we might have some more questions. Commissioner Ginsburg?
You're proposing all brick on the rear facade, and it seems to be most of the other buildings in that line are stucco. Was there a reason you went to brick?
Really, just in the interest of restoring the rear of the building back to its original appearance. But maybe I should, I should ask the architect to speak to the design intent as well.
Please come up and yet just state your name for the record. And if you can speak directly into the mic, the people on Zoom will hear you better.
Kiva Sullivan. So I think our goal here was obviously the aesthetic of the restoring to its existing conditions, especially what we've seen at 491 Henry Street, which followed a similar history where it was stucco at one point and restored into that state. I hope with LPC staff, that seemed to be the advice that we were encouraged to pursue.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
I just have one. I mean, it's a lovely facade, symmetrical. I just get the, the center of this is brick. The heart of it is brick. It's very modern facade. Contradiction. And it's beautiful, but I don't know, there's some discomfort. And I'm wondering, why, why, like, is there a programmatic reason for that square?
You mean the, so the larger opening on the, on the first floor? Which would be the second floor.
Second floor.
The pair of windows.
That's that one.
At the top floor of the addition. Just, I should again ask the architect to speak to this, but I will say that if Commissioners are uncomfortable with it being two bays rather than the traditional three bays, they, they would certainly be willing to adjust it to, to three smaller windows across rather than two larger windows.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? All right. All right, let's move to public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have one hand raised on the attendees list, that being Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society of New York. Christina Conroy, I promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, we find the proposed rooftop addition will be too visible from the very large opening on DeGraw Street, and this will be no fleeting glimpse. We also think the fenestration pattern and window divisions at the rear facade needs some additional thought. The fenestration at the addition seems to miniaturize the historic windows at the top floor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic District's Council. Lucy Levine, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HGC does not find this existing proposal appropriate as we believe the rear yard addition should be lowered by one floor. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hands raised, so I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Six recommends approval on the condition that the horizontal band between the ground floor and the parlor floor windows on the rear yard extension be, be increased. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
All right, thank you. And I'd like to ask if you'd like to respond to the comments.
Yes, thank you, Chair Carroll. This is Jackie Poudyvalen. So regarding the concern about the visibility of the rooftop addition, I do want to point out that the community board was entirely comfortable with it when it was twice the width of what we showed today. And we have made every effort to reduce its, its size, so it's really just functioning as, as a bulkhead with now also a sloped roof. Regarding the fenestration at the rear, if, as I said earlier, if Commissioners have concerns about the proposed fenestration at the addition, of course, the team would be happy to make those adjustments. Regarding the size of the addition itself, there are other three-story rear additions within this block, including ones approved by LPC. There's also one building over a four-story addition. So, and as I tried to show with my context photos, it's really not unusual to look into the rears of these buildings from side streets, from gaps in the street wall, and see changes in volume and see additions. And once again, I just also want to point out that this addition would not extend deeper into the central green space than an adjacent addition. Thank you.
Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, so let's go ahead and close the hearing. Vice Chair Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing? And Commissioner Letfy, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll begin our discussion. We have the rooftop bulkhead, which is visible from a few locations, and then the proposed rear yard addition, which is three stories and visible into the rear of the rear yards through the gap in the street wall. And the applicant has shown that there are other additions in the block. I think 10 other three-story additions, including approved by the commission, and one, two buildings over a, I think she just said a four-story addition. So that she's provided context for that and has expressed willingness to rethink the fenestration pattern. So Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one? Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, the bulkhead is visible, but I, I don't see what they could do about that. And it's, it's only from diagonal views. I think the three-story addition is fine. This is the first time I'm going to say this, but I think you should add glass to the back facade. Fill it in. Might as well. And extending the chimney flues, they have to do that. I can approve this.
All right. Commissioner Mastor?
Yes, I, I agree. I think that the bulkhead has been reduced significantly, is my understanding. It is visible, but, you know, minimally so. I think the three-story rear yard addition is appropriate here because they do have it in, in the, within the block. And it juts out, I guess, less than some of the other buildings nearby. So I can find this appropriate.
All right. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I think that the massing of the addition is appropriate. I agree with Commissioner Jefferson's comment about the elevation. I, I think the applicant should work with staff on the size and number of windows punches at the third floor. And I would also say that they can work with staff on the upper floor, the existing floor openings. Personally, I would have preferred the door on one side. There's a history to asymmetric layout, and I think the centering of it was part of what was disturbing in the elevation.
But maybe when the addition, the fenestration on the addition is adjusted, the door location isn't as important, because I do think we've allowed it in different ways.
Right, okay.
Okay. All right. Does everybody have similar thoughts? Vice Chair Bland?
I do. I'm in agreement, except for that little thin piece of brick that seems to be flying across, separating the lower and the second level. It seems all wrong, at least on the elevation, these little matchstick. If we can put the elevation up there. I mean, there's something not right about all that. If it's gonna not be a continuous window, it should be metal, I guess, not that little thin brick, at least in my judgment.
All right, other thoughts? Check with the bar. Not yet.
Minor thing. I personally find that the two windows, if you look at the floor plan, it's because there's two bedrooms up there. But a bedroom in the center might be a little bit challenging, but basically, yes. But I think that, that they do omit the window sill, both in the renderings and...
Maybe with this sill added, it adds some heft to that spandrel. It might make it, make sense.
I'm, yeah, I just think they might omit that before they submit it. It seems like the design intent moved because they show sill on other drawings, rather than windows. So I would just say.
All right. So I think we can make a motion to approve this with the condition that they restudy the proportions of the fenestration at the second floor and the proportions and detailing of the brick spandrel and this window sill at the parlor floor.
But I also agree that the door should move on the top floor. I mean, if that matters.
Okay.
And that the applicant can work with the staff on the appropriate color for the bulkhead just to reduce its presence.
Okay. I mean, I think we might have enough for the door, so I wouldn't, you know, but they can explore that. So, all right, Commissioner Chapin. So it would be conditioned upon, do you want me to do it? Or I can do it?
Yeah, I thought, we're talking about the third floor as well, so I'm a little confused at this point, but...
Yeah, I think it's the terminology. Okay, let me go ahead and try this. And the matter of docket number 24-04607, 487 Henry Street in the Cobble Hill Historic District, a row house built in 1844 to 45. Application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions, reconstruct the top floor of the rear facade, and extend chimney, chimney flues. And I note that the building style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Cobble Hill Historic District. And I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed rooftop addition will not be visible over the front facade and will only be visible over the rear facade in the context of other rooftop accretions, and that only one chimney extension will be visible over the front and rear facades each, and that these installations will be in keeping with other visible chimneys found within this historic district, that the neutral stucco finish of the rooftop addition and chimney flues extensions will help them to blend with the roof scape, that the variety of rear yard additions within this block, that a variety of rear additions within this block, that, that there is a variety of rear yard additions in this block, and that the proposed addition will not extend beyond the deep addition at the row house to the north or the corner house to the south, and therefore, the rear yard addition will not diminish the central green space. That the rear yard addition will be fully visible through open rear yards on DeGraw Street, where it will be seen in conjunction with other varied rear yard additions of a similar scale, and that its massing materials and general fenestration, including brick cladding, metal, multi-light windows and door assemblies, and metal railings, will be typical of rear additions within this historic district. And in keeping with the residential character of the building and the row, and that the rear yard addition will preserve the top floor, preserving a sense of the original buildings, the building's original form and fenestration as part of a row, and that the existing top floor has been altered with a stucco coating and that the top floor of the rear facade will be reconstructed in new brick with cast stone lintels and sills to match the historic condition. However, we recommend that the applicant work with the staff to restudy the proportions of the fenestration at the top floor of the rear yard addition. So I believe that's the second floor of the house. That they restudy the proportions and detailing of the brick spandrel between the basement and parlor floor, and consider a sill at the parlor floor windows. That they review and final material samples for the stucco of the rooftop bulkhead with staff, and, and they can explore the location of the door at the top floor of the rear facade. All right. Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland? Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Letfy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mastor?
Aye.
Pen in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number six, LPC 24-04640, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1073, lot 36, 28 Prospect Park West, in the Park Slope Historic District. This is a French Renaissance-style mansion with Romanesque Revival-style details designed by Charles Brigham, built in 1901. The application is to modify historic fencing and install a driveway and curb cut.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan Zeke, preservation staff. The item before you is for 28 Prospect Park West, which is located at the southwest corner of Prospect Park West in Montgomery Place. The lot contains the building and a rear yard. The proposal is to install a curb cut and a driveway and to modify the historic fencing to accommodate the vehicle entry. For your reference, here are historic tax photos showing the front and the rear, and the designation photo of 28 Prospect Park West showing a clear view of the rear. Here are the existing conditions at the North Montgomery Place facade and the West rear and East Prospect Park West facades. Now here we see the existing conditions of the fence, an original portion of which is missing and replaced with a deteriorated gate. These are additional photos showing the condition of the historic fence and curb. And this elevation shows the original fence. And here we have the proposed elevation showing the repaired historic fence with a new gate and post to match the historic design. This slide shows the original and existing conditions in closer detail, as well as the section to be removed. And this slide shows the proposed gates and post. Briefly, this slide shows overall views of the existing conditions at the curb and sidewalk and the rear yard. This plan shows the proposed parking, gates, and curb cut in comparison to the existing conditions. For your reference, the proposed work before you today is part of a larger scope of work, including barrier-free access from the rear yard to the building, which staff is authorized to review under the commission's rules for barrier-free access. This slide shows details of the proposed curb cut. And now I'm going to head over to the applicant room here via Zoom, and they'll present the appropriateness of the proposal and answer any additional questions.
Do you hear more?
Yeah.
Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I wasn't sure if you were hearing. So, yes, like we wanted to present a precedence for...
Can you just state your name for the record?
Yes, usually I do the entire presentation. I was thrown off. Someone else like presenting instead of me. But thank you, that was perfect. My name is Kome Minaj. I'm a registered architect in the state of New York. And should I keep going on?
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yes, like, so, we found at several other intersections really close to the property, so that we see the property in the north and like about four, five blocks south, that like there are those lines of buildings facing Prospect Park West. And that like every time you turn the corners, there's a gap to the buildings going down the streets of Park Slope. And every time those, like, those buildings changes, like, there's a gap. And many of those locations have a curb cut or parking spot located there. Maybe if we can go to the next slide. Controlling this. Okay. Yeah, so like here we see this condition that repeats several blocks down. Yeah, so like here we see like those curb cuts, so every time, like, there's a corner buildings that turns, and then like once the, like, the usually larger, and then the row houses start, you have gates, you have open parkings, you have also like next... Yeah, you also have like enclosed gates where it's a little bit more concealed, but you still see the curb cuts on the street. Next. Yeah, and like here again, like, and like here's, it's a larger open lot, like on Seventh Street. Next. And like you also have the condition where like it's a fully enclosed, just like structure that holds the parking spots. So, yeah, like one more of that kind. So like here we see the different conditions that repeats, and what we're proposing on Montgomery Place is in kind, like this is similar to those conditions. Here's one more. I wanted to clarify also that the ADA component in the largest scope of the project is because the, is for the owner of the house. The owner of the house is requiring this kind of devices and like accommodations to be able to fully live in the property. This is why he had to move out for the moment, because the house is not fully compliant with his ADA condition. So he would like to move back and accommodate the house with that. And that's where the parking, the curb cut, and the lifts, like, you know, to take part of that initiative. That's it.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions on this one? So the proposal is to modify the fence to create a gate and create a curb cut at the back. All right. While we're taking that in, let's see if we have any public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have one hand raised on our attendees list, that being Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society of New York. Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. The Victorian Society strenuously opposes this application. The driveway and curb cut will be on Montgomery Place, a unique block built in a short span from 1887 to 1892 in an impressive variety of late 19th century architectural styles. Now Francis Maroney notes that this, it's one of the city's, quote, "most celebrated blocks," unquote. The AIA guide calls it, quote, "one of the truly great blocks in the world of urban row housing, a symphony of materials and textures," unquote. Robert A.M. Stern says it's, quote, "one of the period's great urban ensembles," unquote. There are no driveways or garages on this block. They exist elsewhere in the historic district, but they are not characteristic of it. Like the six examples shown in the presentation, they all appear to predate designation. Now, the creation of a driveway and curb cut essentially privatizes the public sidewalk and curb space. Such a change is not appropriate in a dense 19th century historic district of row houses. Beyond this general concern about the takeover of public space, are more specific findings that the visible gardens of this type are significant features of corner houses and contribute to their historic character and that of the district. That paving over this very visible garden and storing a vehicle in it will destroy the character as a garden, that a sloped driveway or sidewalk will not be visually compatible or harmonious with this block or this historic district, that the work will destroy an intact section of bluestone curb, and that, no doubt, yellow paint and private no parking signs will soon intrude onto the landscape. Now, the owners of this house have one of the finest in the neighborhood, on one of the best blocks in the city, across the street from one of the greatest works of landscape architecture in America. These historic resources are protected in perpetuity from inappropriate alterations by the city and their neighbors. The applicants should not be permitted to diminish the public's experience of this street and district. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hands raised on the attendees list, so I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Six recommends approval on the condition that the curb cut, car pad, and access gate be completely removed from the project. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
All right. So I'm just trying to process the community board's testimony. It sounded like a denial, basically, right?
It's conditional, it's conditional approval.
Eliminates the curb cut and the modification of the gate. Okay.
Sir, is the ADA lift part of the proposal?
I'll let Corey answer that.
That part is eligible for staff level review. It's just going down, you know, from the garden to the basement level. And so you see very little of it, I mean, at staff level.
Okay.
And I would also note that with respect to the plantings in the backyard, the staff could issue, the commission doesn't regulate the plantings in this historic district, so the staff could even issue a permit to pave the backyard, to have just a paved backyard. So in thinking about the impact of this potential change, that's something you all should think about, and just responding to the testimony that identified the plantings as significant features. So I'd like to ask the applicant if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard and maybe return to the photographs of the street scape and talk about the potential visual impact or lack thereof, if that's what your argument is of this curb cut.
Okay, it was muted. So, yes, thank you. The curb in the area, actually, if we can go back to the pictures, that is right in front of the current fence. Seeing this, yes, thank you. The curb is, has a very low threshold, so like any curb cut here would look very similar to the current condition. The proposal is to keep the bluestone. And like, at the same time, like, the curb will be repaired, because like the curb cut takes exactly the place where like it's actually like disrepaired. Regarding the gates, we are proposing to repair the gate, like, I mean, the current fence was a gate using this kind of corner articulation to be able to transition from fence to gate, a gate as well. So we, you know, I think all this is appropriate and will look seamless and better than like, you know, the status in now. Regarding the pavement or the landscape, it's not part of the proposal for now. It hasn't been discussed with the owner. The application is really only for establishing the fence that turns into a gate. The curb cut, that will look very similar to the current curb. And the ability to have a car park there.
Okay. And the, so the sidewalk is concrete pavers, even though there is a bluestone curb that's very low, and I know you addressed that, but the sidewalk itself is concrete, correct?
Correct, like, yes.
Okay. And then the fence is in a very deteriorated state, and it looks as though a piece of it has sort of fallen down. Is that the portion that would be replaced with the gate or modified for the gate?
Yeah, we can, if, we can come back to the drawing here, like, we have a comparative elevation. So, yeah, that's, that's the portion in dash here, like, that is...
A gate there already and would be widening it.
Correct. And we can look at the next drawing. Yes, like, so that's here, like, we see the arrows, that's where it would open, and we introduce this, this corner feature to transition from the existing fence on the right to the proposed gate that would have this similar look. And this is, this is already how the fence transitions to the pedestrian door that is on the left of the proposed gate.
Okay, so you would introduce a new post, but actually, and was I reading that wrong? That there was an existing gate that's not historic? Or am I reading that wrong? Yeah. Okay, so it's replacing the nonhistoric gate and a piece of the historic fence and creating a new gate that would match the historic condition. So in some ways, it would restore a more continued appearance, but for the post that needs to be added. Is that right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so there's... Trying to help here. All right. Okay. All right. Commissioner Goldblum?
So, is this being done because the owner of the house person has disability and therefore needs this, or it's being done for code compliance for some reason?
Oh, sorry, like, it was really low.
Sorry.
Here, is it done for code compliance?
It's being done for code compliance? Not because the owner has a disability?
Yes, so, yeah, yeah.
As a single-family house, it doesn't require ADA compliance? That's kind of what I'm getting at.
It's, it's actually, it's six family. It's, it's, it's a multiple, it's, it's, it's an MDL, like, multiple family. Like, so, there are currently six units, and the current application is to reduce it to three units, but it still would be a multiple, multiple family, since it was in the three family, existing three families that would fit into the one and two family category. So, now the status is, is multiple family.
Right. I understand that, but just to get to the point, is the parking space a required DOB required ADA space, or is this being done for the convenience of the occupants of the building?
Well, right now, I would, yeah, like, it's, it's for the convenience, because like, there's no significant changes.
Right. So your decision to make the building handicapped accessible is one that you're doing voluntarily of your own choice, not because the DOB requires it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, but it is, is it addressing one of the occupants' needs?
Yes, like the, yes.
Well, apparently, it would get access from grave to the basement only. It's not making the building accessible.
All I'm going, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is voluntary.
Yes.
Okay, other questions? Alright, is there anyone in the room? Did I already do testimony? I already did testimony. Okay, if there are no other questions, we'll close the hearing. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So, more.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we're going to begin our discussion. This is a proposed curb cut that would involve removing a modern gate, a piece of historic fence and repairing the rest of the fence, as I understand it, and then starting a new gate that would match the rest of the fence. And, and, and the curb cut, which would remove a portion of bluestone curb, but otherwise concrete sidewalk. And the applicant has shown other curb cuts on, around the corner on other blocks in this district. Commissioner Luttrell, would you like to start this one?
I'm glad we got clarification what the building type is, what the uses are, what's going on with the ADA. And I think we understand what's going on with the repairs and additions. And the repairs, look, the, the, part of this fence is in terrible condition. It certainly doesn't contribute to the neighborhood. And so it's wonderful that it's being repaired. And that this new gate, which is going to be enlarged, is going to match. So, that's all great. It sounds like whatever damage there is in the bluestone curb is going to be repaired as well. And that is also positive. I, it is a typical condition in the neighborhood that, you know, on the side of a corner building, like, we see it all the time, there could be parking, access to parking. Sometimes there's a gate that brings you into a backyard area. And sometimes we see the face of the garage, and so it's a structure. So, I think this is completely, this works and I can support it.
As much as I'd like to see this as a park or green and trees, it's not that condition right here. So I would agree with Commissioner Luttrell.
I agree with Commissioner Luttrell.
Yes, I also agree.
I agree with caveats. Caveat one, because this is, this is a green space now and has been perceived so. And because the parking spot is voluntary in its compliance, one doesn't necessarily have to retain the entire aisle to the side of the vehicle as paved space. So I would ask the applicant to work with the staff to maximize the amount of green space that remains in this backyard space. We often ask for green space or the possibility for green space, unpaved space in rear yards of landlocked townhouses. I think this one would be all the more important. Second, that the applicant work with staff to ensure that the bluestone curbing is retained even as it becomes flush for the, for the, for the curb cut. And that there be no signage in addition to whatever we're having. I think the gate restoration is great. And I think the curb cut is fine and the parking spot is fine. But I think that the aisle space should be reduced and green should be prioritized.
Agree with all the commissioners.
I agree, I just want to point out that the Lamar's Commission doesn't grant curb cuts. We can approve them as appropriate, but the Department of Transportation grants them.
Yeah, exactly.
My turn? I, I agree, the one thing I would note, since I think this is being done for a specific individual who is probably in a wheelchair, that they may need a fair amount of paved surface adjacent to the parking space for the wheelchair access to the lift. But with that caveat, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum's comments.
Sorry, I think we can make a motion to approve this with the condition that they study the amount of planting in the backyard to retain as much planting as needed, as possible. And retaining the bluestone curb if feasible, because I'm not sure it would meet DOT standards. But if it does, we'll have them do that. And of course, any signage would have to come back to us anyway. So I think it's really just trying to re-study to maximize the amount of planting that can be retained. And understanding that there will need to be some paved surfaces and retaining bluestone curb if feasible.
I know you need that side space for access and you definitely need that. But the reason that, that codes mandated go through the entire length of the vehicle is because they don't know where any of the doors are for the person to get out. You know, it's a minivan, you can't move it in the middle of it, so, you know, it's self-driving. So, you know, since it is an individual, per individual's needs, you could probably plan for that. And you don't necessarily need the whole width of it. Right, well, that, that's what he said.
I think your suggestion about the, about the greenery is great. But I, I feel like as this moves forward, it's going to all work within the context. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
They could do some screening of the fence, you know, with greenery to.
I also think it's.
Make it more attractive.
Right, I also think it's very common for people to, you know, saying, put no parking signs. Because otherwise, people park in their driveways. So I, I don't think we want to address that. Yeah. Yeah. In the matter of docket, LPC twenty-four dash zero four six four zero twenty-eight Prospect Park West, Park Slope Historic District, a French Renaissance-style mansion, very lovely, with Romanesque Revival-style details designed by Charles Brigham and built in nineteen oh one. The application is to modify historic fencing and install a driveway and curb cut. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that half of the existing portion of the historic fence to be removed has, had previously been damaged. Therefore, the work will only remove a limited amount of intact historic fabric. That the proposed black finish wrought iron gate and post will match the design dimensions, materials, and finish of the historic fencing. That curb cuts are common at rear yards of corner buildings throughout the historic district. And no historic paving will be removed or altered to install the proposed curb cut or driveway behind the fence. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural character of the building or the streetscape. I also recommend that the applicant work with staff to study the amount of paving there will be and to retain as much greenery as is possible. And also to work with staff on retaining the bluestone curb, if it, if necessary.
If feasible.
If feasible.
Alright, great. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Alright, Clark, will you call the board?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland? Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu? Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With ten in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Alright, please continue to work with the staff on those details and we'll move to the next item.
LPC twenty-four dash zero three zero eight nine. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block eleven fifty-one, lot seventy-three. One eighty-nine Prospect Place in the Prospect Heights Historic District. This is an Italianate neo-Breck style rowhouse designed by F.B. Lincoln, built circa eighteen seventy-seven. The application is to legalize changes to a rooftop penthouse constructed without LPC permits.
Hello? Hi. My name is Ji-Jean Tang. I'm representing the, I'm the architect representing the owner of one eighty-nine Prospect Place. This is, uh, three, one eighty-nine Prospect Place is a three-story rowhouse located in Prospect Heights Historic District and was designated in nineteen forties. And we are here today to legalize, to propose the legalization of the existing fourth floor full with dormer, which exists when the current owner purchased the property in twenty twenty-one. So, this is the text photos, historical photos showing the buildings in the row, the one eighty-three, one eighty-five, one eighty-seven, and our property, one eighty-nine. In the historical photo, we can see that there are visible dormers exist since nineteen forties. Especially the one that further on the left of the screen, I believe it's one eighty-three. And this is a slide showing the, the buildings at each timeline. First building is the historical photo, the historic photo that we saw in the previous slide. The second photo is the LPC destination photos, where there is an existing single dormer. Where is there, so, second photo is the LPC destination photos showing the single dormer visible on the, on the fourth floor. Their photos is the, is taken in twenty twenty-one, that is when the current owner purchased the property. And the last photo is the current photo of the, of the building. And then you can see a full with dormer on the top. You might ask why the third photos doesn't show the full with dormer. It was because when the owner bought the big, it was because the full with dormer is invisible when you are standing on the building side of the street. So at the time in twenty twenty-one, when we went to the building, because it's so invisible, we didn't, we didn't even bother to go to the cross street to take the, the photos like the last one. So, this is the side, street view analysis that we can see most of the buildings on the street facing Prospect Place are relatively taller buildings, four to five stories, except for five, except for the five buildings in the middle of the block, there are three stories shorter buildings, our property is one of it. And the next slide is the zooming to these five small townhouses in the block. That you can see, among these five smaller buildings, there are four of them that has visible dormers currently. And then the one on the further left of the building, one eighty-one, the, the most visible dormers, it was somehow expanded from the historical dormers. And then it's again, it's right next to the, it's right next to the taller buildings. And then our property on the further right of the, this row, one eighty-nine, is also right against a much taller buildings. We believe that this, this made the visibility of the dormer shied away from the, from the public view. And we took some photos walking down the street from different distance and different angles to understand the visibility of the dormers throughout the, in the, on the street. And you can see all these photos are taken from across street of the buildings. As I mentioned earlier, that if you are standing on the, on the building side of the street, you won't be able to see the dormer at all. And then I also want to mention that all these photos are taken in the winter times, where there's no leaves. And then we believe that obviously the, the visibility of the dormers will be much less visible during the spring or summertime. And this is the zoomed-in photo show the current construction of the dormer. It's, it's constructed with the white vinyl and the horizontal gutter. Horizontal gutter. And this is the elevation showing the current condition, the white vinyl siding and the horizontal gutter. And we are here to propose we are here to propose to replace the current white vinyl siding with, with the, to the light gray stucco finish with the roof drip edge. So, so that the dormer can be more cohesive with the rest of the building. And this is a building section showing the dormer relationship with the already exist, the fourth, current fourth floor. And the zooming detail showing the vis, vis, visible portion of the dormer is about one foot nine inches. And this slide has no dormer at all, but this slide, the purpose of this slide is to show the committees that the current owner is there to take care of the buildings. This is the before, the left photo is when he purchased the building with this condition. And the photo on the right is showing that he, how he took care of the building, replaced the, restored the building facade to a decent condition right now. And then he's here to do the right thing to take care of the building, maintain the building the right way. And in conclusion, we are here to mitigate the conditions of the existing dormer, which the current owner inherited from his purchase, unfortunately. And then we are here to propose to refinish the dormer with the light gray stucco to minimize, to minimize the visibility. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions, commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
I thought something was built.
So, this is a row, within this row that is sandwiched between some taller rows, there were a number of dormers popping up at the time of designation. And a previous owner who owned this building expand, either expanded or expanded a pre-existing dormer to make it full width and clad it in vinyl siding. The current owner, who has been working with the staff to restore the building, he just recently bought the building, discovered, working with our staff, that that change had happened without permits. And so they inherited that condition. They're coming in to ask to legalize the volume of it. But they are proposing to change the finish of it from vinyl siding to a stucco to help it recede from view, understanding that it, you know, it's work that is in violation. They're trying to improve upon it. That help, okay. Alright, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
There's, is there a drawing that shows us in plan where the dormer is in relationship to the adjacent dormers on the other buildings? I didn't see a plan that showed an alignment with them. Yes.
This is the section.
Right. How does it compare to the context down the street of dormers? Is it in line with them?
Maybe a bird's eye view.
Yeah.
Of the buildings.
A roof plan that shows? That picture seemed to suggest they were in line, but I just want to make sure you looked at that. That's not a roof plan, though.
Go back one, one more. Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Right.
It suggests that it's in line.
Does it, uh, in your experience on the roof, does it align with the other dormers?
With our adjacent dormer, I think the, the, the one on the further left might be even
More forward?
Forward than ours.
Okay. All right, so one might be even more in, forward than yours.
Yeah, they are not in line, it's just on.
Okay.
Yes.
The one at several houses away is closer to the front.
The bookend on the taller mass building on the left is, is forward more to the front of the sign.
Yes.
Yeah, and the others are a bit just behind this one. And is the renovation you're doing to the existing condition going to change its height in any way?
No.
No.
No. If anything, it will, no, we are not changing the height. We are, we are, all the materials that we're proposing is to minimize.
Okay. And is there any precedent of facade finish for those other dormers that could be precedent for this material?
I, I believe they are, let me show.
Okay.
I believe they are also stucco. If we can, we, we, I did try to zoom into the photo that we, I believe they are also stucco with the, um, brown color.
Okay.
All right, other questions?
The other do-
A little bit of a mix, but the, the bookended one is a brown color.
The most visible dormers is.
The colors, I've got them on here, but you know, just the options, they're, they're presenting the gray as the preferred option at the moment, right?
Yes, because I think they think that will help it distinguish it from the building below and recede from view.
So.
Got it.
The, uh, the taller building adjacent to our property, the side of it is light gray stucco. Feel like this, the color might blend into the background, the backdrop of that building.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, there's a bunch of the colors.
Okay, other questions? All right, um, let's move, we're gonna move to public testimony, we might have questions after that. Is there anyone in the room? Oh, yes, I do have one person who signed up, Patty Hagan.
Prospect Heights Neighborhood Development Council, PHNDC. Hereby presents our testimony about the certificate of appropriateness application for one eighty-nine Prospect Place. This is one of five Italianate neo-grec style rowhouses designed by F.B. Lincoln and built circa eighteen seventy-seven. The application is to legalize the existing fourth-floor full-width penthouse, which is visible from the south side of Prospect Place. In two thousand and nine, at designation of the Historic District, there was a small center dormer visible in photographs. The full-width penthouse appears to have been added sometime after designation. However, there is no evidence that this addition was ever reviewed or approved either by Landmarks Preservation Commission or DOB. Had it been subject to review, we do not believe the rooftop addition would have been supported by PHNDC or approved by LPC in its present condition before it was built. Therefore, PHNDC does not support the legalization of the current structure with or without the stucco facade now proposed by the applicants. We recommend that the applicants work with LPC staff to propose a design that either is not visible from the public thoroughfare or which better harmonizes with the front facade and historic context. Thank you for considering our testimony. And this letter was written by Gibb Bakoni, the Chair of PHNDC, and I'm standing in. Do you have any questions? And I'm also handing in, um, a letter from Community Board Eight that voted along with us. Okay. And.
Okay, I do not see any further hands raised in the attendees list. If you would like to speak now on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Okay, I do not see any further hands raised. So I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Eight recommends denial. And I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, so I'd like to ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard, or if there's anything else you'd like to add at this point.
I, I think, um, it's, 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 uh, as the representing the, as our representative owner, we are here to, to work with what we have and try to, try the best to, to, to resolve the situation that the current owner inherited by the previous, uh, by his purchase. And I believe the current owner, by showing what he had done to the building, I believe the current owner will, is committed to, to improve this, this property, this, this property the way that, um, LPC will.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, if there are no other questions, we'll move to our discussion, okay? Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed. And so as we've heard, this is, um, a row where there, even at the time of designation, were visible dormers, uh, popping up. But the row itself is nestled sort of between taller rows on either side. And, um, the current, uh, owner bought this building and had started to do restoration work and other work, working with our staff, and discovered that their pre-existing dormer had been widened without permits in the past. And they are proposing to modify it to help it recede from view by replacing the vinyl with stucco that matches the side wall of the taller building and is, uh, you know, would be distinct from the facade below. Um, and they have shown that the other dormers in the row are at varying planes and colors, so most of them are darker and, um, the bookend, which is also full width, is more forward than this one. So with all of that context, we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Master, would you like to start this one?
Sure, um, I think the important point is that even though the dormer is visible, that we have, um, other dormers in, you know, in this row and, uh, they are visible. Um, and that some of them are a darker color and some of them are, uh, more forward than this one. Um, and because the applicant is trying their best to minimize the visibility by doing a light gray stucco, I can find this appropriate.
Okay, great. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I'm, the fact that the pre-existing dormer, there was a single dormer at time of designation, there was a, a small or mass there. And also they think that we have to look at this as if it were a proposed addition and didn't preexist, and would we find it appropriate? From the presentation given, it seems minimally visible to myself. I would, I do feel that it, that the applicant does need to provide more information to the staff. I, I feel a little bit like the sightlines and, and the existing adjacent conditions could be documented better. But, um, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Letty?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate and I, uh, I agree. It, uh, makes sense for the applicant to work with staff on the details here.
Vice Chair Bland?
Yep. We're not a punitive body and, um, uh, this applicant did not cause this issue. Uh, and I think they're here to ameliorate the issue. If it were an egregiously wrong thing, uh, and stuck out, I might say, well, you didn't cause it, but it's still a problem. But the fact is, there are a bunch of other ones, all there. So what they're doing is simply making this one a be- a better version of what's there now. And I think, uh, it's got several neighbors and I think this is completely appropriate and actually a positive change.
Right. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I, I, I concur with all the comments. And in addition, uh, just by looking at the restoration of the front facade, you can see this is, um, is a much improved versus the, the previous condition.
Right, uh, Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree with my fellow commissioners, appropriate.
All right, and do, do we all agree on this then, at this point?
You should be the start.
Okay, we'll have the staff do, uh, samples in the field. Okay, so commi-
Just want to add that the other four buildings, the consistency of color of all four should be taken into account.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll do a motion to recommend approval, um, with the condition that they final, uh, that they work with the staff on final finish samples for the stucco. Final review and approval of the finish, uh, finish of the stucco. And the details.
In the matter of LPC dash twenty-four dash zero-three-zero-eight-nine, one eighty-nine Prospect Place, Prospect Heights Historic District, an Italianate neo-grec style rowhouse designed by F.B. Lincoln and built, uh, eighteen seventy-seven. Application is to legalize changes to a rooftop penthouse constructed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Prospect Heights Historic District. I also note that the building is located at the end of the row and is adjacent to a rowhouse that is a full-story taller and with a masonry lot line wall covered in a light-colored coating. I recommend approval, finding that the construction of the proposed rooftop dormer-style addition did not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that by the time of the nineteen forty's tax photograph, the majority of buildings within this row featured dormers that were visible over the primary facade. Therefore, a visible dormer-style addition at this building is consistent with the historic conditions at the row. That the addition is set back from the cornice, thereby maintaining a sense of the building's original massing and featuring a similar level of visibility to other rooftop additions in the row. That the proposed removal of the aluminum gutter and vinyl siding and installation of gray-finished stucco and a drip edge will give the addition a neutral appearance that more closely reflects a historic dormer condition. And that the work does not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building, the streetscape, or the Pers- Prospect Heights Historic District. Um, I encourage the applicant to work with staff for the final color selection, um, and detail.
And, uh, Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
All right, and Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Mr. Letty?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Ten in favor, none opposed, and motion passes.
That's approved, thank you. Please continue to work with the staff on the color and the details. All right, and we are fortunately a little ahead of schedule. We're gonna take advantage of that and do one more item before we break for lunch.
That's right, so we're gonna pull, uh, public hearing item number eight, which would have been the first item after lunch, to do now. Uh, that is LPC twenty-two dash zero-seven-eight-eight-nine, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block five fifteen, lot four fifty-nine West Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a store building designed by John H. Whiteknock and built in eighteen eighty-eight to eighty-nine. The application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of painted wall signs.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Marie Garino, Preservation Staff. The item before you is an application to establish a ten-year, uh, master plan for painted wall signs at four fifty-nine West Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. The building is located on the east side of the street between Houston and Prince Streets. As you will recall, the commission recently established rules to allow for painted wall sign master plans to be reviewed at staff level. All of the proposed criteria for this sign are in compliance with those rules, with the exception of its proximity to another painted wall sign. The rule only allowed staff to approve new signs that are within, uh, that are not within one hundred feet of another sign. So this proposed sign is facing another commission-approved painted wall sign located at four sixty-five West Broadway, um, right across this one-story building. And so this middle photo is showing, um, the, sort of the only vantage point from which these two signs can be seen together. And there's a similar installation nearby at three ninety-nine and three ninety-three West Broadway, where the commission approved two painted wall signs facing one another over a one-story intermediary building. And then we just have our sort of example, uh, proposed potential signage and a map of the existing painted wall signs within this historic district. And the commission will finally note that there is an existing painted wall sign at this location with an open LPC violation. And this sign, um, or the establishment of this master plan, if approved, would cure that violation. Thank you, and the applicants are here if you have any questions.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions for the applicant on this one? So, okay, Commissioner Chu?
The, the height of it, is that regulated by us?
Uh, so we, um, have had a long history with painted wall signs and have found them to be appropriate because historically, in particularly in commercial and industrial districts, there were painted wall signs on side facades. And over the years, the commission developed a policy on sort of how, what criteria to apply. And, um, and now that has been codified in a rule and it allows the staff to approve signs. Um, it doesn't specifically talk about the height, but it does say the, sort of the rule that is, uh, the now rule for staff-level approval is that the sign be no more than twenty-five percent of the visible wall surface, that it have a painted border, that it be set back from the front facade and down a couple of feet from the roof line. So that, but other than that, it doesn't speak to
Down what, from the roof?
Uh, I think a couple of feet.
Couple, that's it, okay. I'm just asking because as we look at proposals- I'm just asking because as we look at proposals for painted signs, you can look at them generically and just say that it's the side facade and we accept it? Or do we feel that there needs to be some relationship to the building facade? I mean, when I look at this, the first thing I'm looking at is a horizontal band, and why isn't this higher above that band? And leaving and floating, but then I see that there's another one right across from it.
That we approved.
That we approved.
Yeah, and so I think we haven't really, in the criteria that were sort of developed and then codified for staff approval, it did not talk about relating to architectural features on the building.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, and so this otherwise would meet the rule for a staff-level approval, but for the fact that it is adjacent to another Commission-approved one. And the, but they don't, they, you don't really see them in the context of each other, except from this particular view where you see them obliquely. And as Marie pointed out, we did another, we approved another pair of signs that were, that didn't meet the role in that, and were closer together, facing each other in another, on another street. All right, let's see if we have any public testimony. Is there anyone in the room would like to speak on this item? Okay, so let's turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a few hands raised on the attendees list. The first we'll be hearing from is Jeremy Woodoff from the Victorian Society of New York. Jeremy Woodoff, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeremy Woodoff speaking for the Victorian Society, New York. The proposed master plan appears to comply with the rules for such painted wall signs in the Soho Cast Iron and similar historic districts. We have no objection in principle to approving. However, we raise the issue of graphic appropriateness. Some of the possible signs shown in the presentation are examples of photorealism. The craftsmanship to achieve this with hand-painted signs is remarkable, but we find this type of image to be stylistically alien to this historic district. These signs are more akin to modern printed or LED signs seen on highway billboards. They are nothing like the signs found historically in Soho. To be clear, the issue is not content, which the Commission rightly doesn't regulate. The issue is graphic style. Although the two can be related, we think it's possible to avoid this type of photorealistic sign without unduly limiting content. Historic painted signs have an identifiable character. It's possible to describe their characteristics to allow creation of signs that are historically appropriate to the district and that do not appear to be an incursion from I-95. We urge the Commission on this and future applications to restrict the use of photorealistic signs as being incompatible with and inappropriate to the historic district. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HTC supports the size and location of this signage master plan, and we appreciate that LPC requires wall signs to be hand-painted in this district. We also appreciate that LPC does not regulate signage content, but we have a note about style, which we believe this body can regulate. We feel the signage should not be photorealistic in style because Soho's landmark buildings aren't highway billboards. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Corey Jasim. Corey Jasim, I'm promoting you to pass, panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. Um, so I have, uh, I'm a resident of the building, and I have lived in Soho for close to forty years now, and.
Sorry, if you could please state your name for the record.
It's Corey Jasim.
Thank you.
So, again, resident of four fifty-nine West Broadway, have lived in Soho for close to forty years. It's the majority of my life. And we found this company who is willing to do these hand-painted signs on the side of our building at a time when it's incredibly important for our building to have this additional source of revenue as there are several members of the building who can no longer afford to live there. The taxes in the building have more than doubled in the past five years to the point where it's gotten to be restrictive for, for long-time residents of the building to be able to maintain the residence there. And so the, the revenues from this sign, and, and we made sure it would be a hand-painted sign and it would be in, you know, work well within the construct of the community, would really be meaningful to help, you know, one, two, three, four different thirty-year-plus building residents who happen to be local artists and, and purveyors of content, to be able to stay in the building and not have to move to, you know, another part of the country or another part of the city. So it's, it's very important to us from that perspective. And, you know, and I, I saw at the beginning, there was a sign put across that said, you know, there's a sign adjacent to this. That, that isn't a hand-painted sign and ends up having, you know, lots of different types of ads on it. This is where, you know, we, we want to be very particular about this in terms of, you know, what we see as we approach our building. And so we were very particular in picking a company that does things that are hand-painted, that, that looks like art, that doesn't look like an advertisement. And so we're, you know, we, we are contracted with the agency to be able to approve of what goes there, and, and we're excited about it, but it's also very meaningful to us in terms of enabling people to stay in our building.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony. I see another hand raised, one Jay Koenig. Jay Koenig, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, can you guys hear and see me?
Yes.
Awesome. My name's Jacob Koenig. Like Corey, I'm a resident at four five nine West Broadway. Echoing all of Corey's statements, I'm a new father. I've been a resident of the building for a number of years now. The costs, you know, monthly and yearly is from a tax perspective and building maintenance perspective has become pretty restrictive and, you know, prohibitive. My wife and I are probably expecting soon for a second daughter, and just given the expense in the city, it, this would have a meaningful impact on our ability to stay in our apartment. You know, I know Corey mentioned a number of other very longtime residents, but from a new family perspective, it really goes a long way in helping, you know, cover costs so that we can stay in a place that we love. It's really the majority of what I have to say. We've all talked about internally, you know, being as respectful as possible. We all love the neighborhood, the building, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony. I am looking through our attendees list now, and I do not see any further hands raised. So I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval of the sign provided that its size is reduced by a modest amount and that the tag be as small as possible to remain legible from the street. And with that, I'll bring you back to you, Chair Carroll.
All right. And before we see if the applicants want to say anything, I think we should talk a little bit about the Commission's regulatory history with respect to style. And, and Mark and Corey, I'll ask you to jump in. But, you know, years ago, the Commission did have a policy that the size, that, that signs have sort of the things I already described, but also that it be more painterly and less photorealistic. And that actually is a very challenging thing to, for the staff then to be able to implement because they're all painted signs. And then we had a very long and thorough detailed presentation by Colossal, who are painters, who gave us the history of painted wall signs and talked about paint as a medium and as a art form, and really sort of talked about how we were first using the term photorealism incorrectly, but also talked about how the historic painted signs were not only text, that they were imagery, and that as long as you are using a traditional painted method, whatever, regardless of the style, it is still consistent with the historic signs. And the Commission was persuaded by that. And, and I think after that, really started to just make, you know, the policy evolved where we started to look at the style much less, and ultimately, we sort of didn't regulate the style at all as well as long as it fit within these other parameters that had to do with the number of colors, the border, and the size, and proximity to the facade. And so that's where we ended. The Commission at that same time also decided that the tags did not have a negative impact and that the tags could be, that, that, that could be below the sign. And that was all codified in our rules, and that is now what the staff can approve. So the staff can approve what might be described as photorealistic signs. Mark and Corey, do you want to add anything to that?
I mean, the only thing I would add is that there was a sort of a specific finding at the time. The rules adopted or a recognition that, given all the other parameters, photorealism didn't necessarily detract or in any way, you know, in addition to the difficulty of actually regulating it, but that, given the size and the setback and all this other stuff, that there was no impact from a photorealist perspective.
Okay. All right. I don't know if there's any final comment you want to make before we begin our discussion.
Yes, Jackie, Community Board Preservation, Salt Lake City Project. Just one thing I wanted to mention quickly, the Community Board Resolution recommended reduction in size of the sign. The size of this sign would actually be equal to the size of the sign. That's directly opposite from the wall, but you can't, you know, perceive them at the same time. But I just wanted to know, wanted to let you know for context, it's the same size. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And that was a Commission-approved sign as well. Okay.
So if you have a sign on that wall, and that's north, would you have a sign on the south wall also? And if there was an east wall, you could have a sign also. You could have three signs.
So, no, well, right now, at staff level, staff could approve this signage master plan except for the fact that it is within a hundred feet of another sign. And that is why we, as a Commissioner, are looking at it is because of the proximity of those two signs to each other. If there was a third sign proposed, we would also be looking at that at the Commission level and would make a determination on appropriateness. That would be, I think, more from that one view would be, I'm not sure you could ever do it because that building in that view has windows, but if there was theoretically a blank wall there, I think those, that would be seen as kind of seeing them more in context with each other probably than two that face each other where you see them obliquely. So it's really, the one piece of this that's really before us is its location across from the other one. And, and, and as Marie pointed out, we have at Commission level approved others that face each other in the district. All right, so we'll begin our discussion after we close the hearing. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed, and we're beginning our discussion. And as I've already pointed out, this meets our rules in many ways, except for the proximity. And, you know, there's one view where you see them obliquely adjacent to each other. Commissioner Jefferson, do you want to start this one? Do you have any thoughts on this one? Yeah.
I can, I can approve.
Okay, Commissioner Master?
I agree. I think this is a staff-level approval, other than the fact that they face each other, and there really aren't many views where you would see both. So I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Chu?
Agreed.
Do others have any thoughts? Are we all in agreement? We're all in agreement. Okay, Commissioner Jefferson, would you make the motion?
Sure.
No, I said yes.
In the matter of LPC dash twenty-three dash zero-seven eight-eight-nine, four fifty-nine West Broadway, Soho Cast Iron Historic District, application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of painted wall signs. I note that the building's style, scale, building materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historical character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the painting wall signs are a traditional method of advertising that was historically found in this historic district, typical unplained secondary facade and exposed common brick masonry. That the painting application of this sign would be in keeping with the traditional application method. That the painting, traditional application method, commercial, commercial character of painted wall signs historically found on buildings within the historic district. The design, and, that the sign, and this line at four sixty-five West Broadway will all be seen in conjunction with other, other from a narrow vantage point directly across the street. The design would be located at underdeveloped secondary elevation, and will be pulled back from the primary facade by three feet. Therefore, the sign would not detract from any significant architectural feature of the building. That the proposed master plan would permit a painted non-illuminated wall sign that covers less than twenty percent of the visible wall surface, a coverage percentage that is consistent with prior Commission approvals, that the, that the combination of the placement and size of the sign would be helped, it remain as a born-in present at the building and within the streetscape, regardless of the type of graphic or number of colors used within the body of the sign. The sign would include a three, three inch, three feet. The sign would include a three, three inch, three foot solid painted border, a typical feature of the historic wall sign. That the vendor tag will have a set of location and size, and that the proposed master plan would be valid for ten years. And the application would document every sign under the master plan, that there'd be a record the Commission can consider when reviewing the effectiveness of the master plan criteria.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland? Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we are now going to break for lunch. It is one o'clock. We will return at one-thirty, and we will resume with item number nine. And we'll ask all members of the public to exit the hearing room at this time. And if you are participating on Zoom, we ask that you voluntarily exit Zoom at this time so that if you wish to return, you won't have any technical difficulties doing so.